Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will call this special meeting of council to order. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have quorum.
Okay, thank you. We have nothing under committee, the whole closed meeting. What I will ask for next is, are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Counselor Holland.
Thank you, Worship. I, Mary Rita Holland, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of new motion one and two, dealing with the KEDCO Review Committee 2016 Summary Report and Assessment, as my employer, Key's Job Center, regularly partners with KEDCO.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other declarations of pecuniary interest. Next, I will ask for an approval of the addits. We have just a couple of items of communication. Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor George. And that carries. We have no presentations this evening, but we do have several delegations. First, we have Nick Waterfield, Treasurer of Downtown Kingston BIA Board of Management, who will appear before council to speak to the motion with respect to the recommendations from the KEDCO Review Committee 2016 Summary Report and Assessment. And just a reminder to all of our delegations that you have five minutes. Mr. Waterfield, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. Mayor and Members of Council, thank you for inviting us here tonight. It's a wonderful night, and I'll try to make this brief. I am bringing a presentation that basically summarizes the Downtown Kingston's take on the review. So, in point, I'm really happy or planning to simply go through it and then present it to the clerk, and I'm happy to answer questions. I have a long history of working with KEDCO, lots of things, and before I'm very much enjoying where we're at now in the last little while. But anyway, to Mayor and Members of Council from Downtown Kingston BIA, the Downtown Kingston Business Improvement Area Board of Management has followed the work of the KEDCO Review Committee from last fall to present. We have had board representatives attend Review Committee meetings, attend KEDCO open houses, and other functions. We have discussed the Review Committee work at several BIA Board meetings. The report recommendations are generally in line with BIA Board discussion. Comes with four points. One, first point, separating tourism Kingston and creating an independent board makes sense. Tourism is very important to Kingston. Some BIA Board members did see administrative cost efficiencies available if the two functions were kept together. Possibly maintaining these efficiencies through cohousing can be explored. Secondly, operating both agencies with arm-length boards that maintain council representation and are guided by service contracts with the municipality should supply the oversight appropriate to the primary funder, the city of Kingston. Thirdly, new offices for both agencies in more visible and accessible locations can better demonstrate the Kingston product to visitors, businesspeople, and community members. And fourth, new systems of performance measurement and implementation of new transparency and accountability programs will breed credibility and positively influence the corporate culture. We realize that much has been accomplished by the KEDCO Board already in the last 10 months. We thank the KEDCO Review Committee for their work. We know the process involving some members of the public was more difficult than it needed to be, but the committee still found a way to bring forward recommendations of value. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity to speak with you on this important subject. And as I say, I've got, I think I've got a few more minutes if there are any questions, but if not, we are, as a board, as a Downtown Kingston, basically endorsing what has come forward so far and look forward to moving to something that stays as positive as it's been from our end, which is more in the tourism part. In the last little while, it's been a light change, really, from what it was a year and a half ago, and really enjoying the understanding, understanding all the need for answering all the points that the Kingston public has brought forward.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Counselor Stroud.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, I thought you were leaving the podium. So, thank you, Mr. Waterfield. You mentioned one of your points, I think it was point three, about the relocation of the office to a, to an area more accessible. Do you have any suggestions? I know that the office was once very close to the, in the courtyard area down, right in the heart of the historic downtown. Do you have any preference?
I don't personally, I wouldn't want to be on, put anybody on the spot for it. It is, it would be like, what we do downtown, we do tourism more, it makes more sense to have an office that could show off what we do closer to the downtown than where it is now. I understand why it's where it is now, but if it is going to be split off, it does make more sense that it be in the tourism heart. We're not the only part of tourism, the downtown, but we are a large part of it. But in terms of a specific location, the ground floor, second floor, I wouldn't want to go at this stage. I just recognize that it's been brought up by the report, and I'm happy to, you know, to say that I, the board would find it as a positive move. And if it doesn't move, the way that the tourism is going right now, that's okay too, because the tourism is really moving in a wonderful direction, the single message.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our second delegation is Nassar Al Arda, MEI 2016 candidate, Smith School of Business, Queen's University, who will also speak to the recommendations from the KEDCO Review Committee report.
Sir, I actually, okay, good. Thank you so much. So, I have been looking at five questions for the last few months that I would like to share with you, and those questions are, do we know how many innovative ideas that we built every year or are built every year in Kingston? And do we know how many of those ideas are actually staying in Kingston every year? And do we know what it takes to retain business or innovative ideas in the city, let alone attracting new business ideas from other cities? And do we have a system that would actually allow young innovators and entrepreneurs to access resources in order to advance their business, innovative business ideas in Kingston? And do we have a system that would connect all vested actors and parties in Kingston in the social, in the innovation and social innovation in Kingston? So, thank you so much for the opportunity to allow me to come here today and share with you about a model, a platform, that I have been working on that would actually help address all those five questions and more. So, let me share a story with you. Earlier this year, I went to an event in Toronto that actually brought together innovators, young innovators and entrepreneurs from Queen's University, and investors that are based in Toronto. There were thin innovative business ideas that were pitched in Toronto, and just last month, I went to another event in Toronto that brought together young innovators and entrepreneurs, again, from Queen's, to meet with successful innovators and entrepreneurs that are based in Toronto. And in that event, you can imagine that would be more ideas going from Kingston to Toronto. But in that event, I saw four of the thin ideas that were actually built here in Kingston that are right now in Toronto, and I spoke to them. So, today, they are flourishing in Toronto, they are opening up new markets, creating jobs, contributing to generating revenues, and of course, the economic prosperity to the city where they are in right now, which is Toronto. I spoke to them, and I asked them, I said, "Why are you not in Kingston anymore?" And one of them told me that because they wouldn't have been able to locate and access the resources that they needed to advance their business ideas. And the second person told me that Kingston does not have the innovation-enabling environment that young innovators and entrepreneurs would like to have access to. And so, I also hear arguments in the city of Kingston, since I came here, I'm actually a newcomer to Kingston, that people, you know, young people would always want to move to Toronto for the excitement of a big city. So, as someone who has lived in a number of cities overseas and in a large city in Canada, and as someone who has worked actually on economic development projects that benefited more than 129 municipalities overseas, I would argue that young people, the young innovators and entrepreneurs specifically, would move to new cities after the resources that I think they don't find here in Kingston. And so, the other thing I want to say is that, you know, they also move where economic activities and businesses are concentrated, and also, economic and business activities would be concentrated where resources are easily accessible and locatable and accessible. So, I think at the core of the issue that I have seen and studied here in Kingston is the fact that resources are not locatable, not accessible in the city, and we have a solution that would actually help reorganize the resources and allow young innovators and entrepreneurs to have access to.
That's great. Thirty seconds, you have thirty seconds.
So, then I will, I will close by saying that, just to summarize, I wanted to say some other things, but maybe in other opportunities. Just to summarize, I think what we need here is we need to connect all vested parties and actors in a system in Kingston, and also, we need to begin to, then Kingston will gradually begin to retain ideas and innovations, and I think also, the city, local businesses, local organizations will also need a platform that would allow them to engage the public in.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the delegation? Counselor Turner.
Yes, and thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. I have a question for you. In terms of resources, what are you referring to? Could you qualify that?
So, young innovators and entrepreneurs, what I mean by young innovators and entrepreneurs are the innovators and entrepreneurs that are at the early-stage ideas, and what they're looking for are mentors, expertise to advance their ideas, to start their businesses, but also, they're looking for financial resources as well.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Neal.
Thank you very much. I've heard of various anecdotes that kind of echo some of the things that you've been saying. I know that there's a number of very, very good innovative ideas that have grown out of Queen's and out of St. Lawrence as well. And I'm just curious whether there's been any attempt, I know that you've taken some of those entrepreneurs and some of those innovators to Toronto to meet investors. Has there been any effort to bring investors either locally or from Toronto or Montreal to meet with some of those innovative people?
Thanks for the question. So, I should note that I'm actually a student at Smith School of Business, so I don't really organize those events, I participate in them. And I haven't seen any event where you would see investors coming to Kingston. I think there are ways in which we can connect investors to young innovators, to innovators and entrepreneurs in general, but specifically to young innovators and entrepreneurs, because there, it is very complicated for young innovators and entrepreneurs to actually navigate the investment landscape. So, there is a way in which we can, we can make it a two-way street instead of, you know, all the time going to Toronto. And one more thing I would like to mention here, I actually went to the University of Waterloo before I came to Queen's, and I lived in Kitchener-Watton for a while. And so, in Kitchener-Watton, what happens is that investors go to Kitchener-Watton. Kingston is really nice, like, to me, Kingston is nicer than, you know, Kitchener-Watton, and it's not really far from, as you mentioned, Montreal, or Ottawa, or Toronto. So, I think there is something that can be done on the physical side of bringing investors here, but also, there is something that I'm working on, on the online side as well.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Bowman.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I'm just curious a little bit more about, you mentioned that one of the things that attracts them is having those mentors in Toronto. So, what would you recommend for us to establish? Because, I mean, whenever you're gonna have an innovative idea, or you're thinking about striking out on your own, that's a big leap for some people. So, having that mentorship in place allows that kind of take somebody by the hand and lead them to the next step. So, what would your recommendation be based on your conversations of how we could work to establish that better in Kingston, so that when these innovative ideas come out, that mentorship is already in place so that we can retain this knowledge and those ideas out of Kingston and start building that?
Yes. So, as you know, there are physical spaces, and of course, there are organizations in Kingston that are mandated to support young innovators and entrepreneurs, and entrepreneurs in general. I think it's not enough, and as I mentioned earlier, so there is something about the, like, having a system that would bring all those parties together to work in a unified system. I think this is one of the things that you don't find in Kingston, that you would find in other places, whether in Canada or outside of Canada. So, that's one thing I have seen and experienced myself even in Kingston. The second thing is that in the online platform, as you might see on the slide, so, and actually, there is a one-page summary that I, yeah, so, you would see there and here as well that, so, the online platform, I think, is a very effective and inexpensive solution that would help to solve that problem. So, and also, we need to understand that young people are online all the time. So, we really need to leverage that tool to allow for those connections between young innovators, entrepreneurs from one side, and mentors and experienced individual or individuals, including also professors from universities on the other side. So, that's one thing we could do, and as I said, we're also trying on our platform to make it beneficial to mentors, to professors, to come onto the platform so that they, we can create that interaction between the entrepreneurs, innovators from one side, and mentors from the other side.
Thanks. And just looking at this quickly, the one word pops out, and that's collaborative platform. So, is this something that you just feel where there's a lot of stakeholders, and it's just simply connecting them and having them all work to sort of create the economy and drive the economic engine? So, that's part of this recommendation, is to really work to enhance that? So, could you just elaborate a little bit on how possibly some other cities have maybe done that to an extent? And you said it's inexpensive, so, some of the lessons learned, just some of the positives to take away from that, please?
So, there are two, there are 200 online platforms all over the world. Of the 200, there are 15 that are trying to support innovators and entrepreneurs. Of the 15, there are only two that are open partially, not 100% to innovators and entrepreneurs, and those are one in the UK and one in, across the European Union. So, the one across the European Union is actually part of their economic development plan, because, as you know, they have been going through challenges of youth unemployment, so they have a high youth unemployment rate. So, there are those two platforms that I have studied very closely, and I also have seen what the shortcomings are in those platforms, and so, there is, there is something in those platforms. This is not like Facebook or LinkedIn, where you can just go and create a profile, and then, you know, if nothing happened, then nothing happened. Those platforms, I think they have to be customized for cities, and that's one of the reasons why I'm speaking to you today, because I think we can customize it for the needs of every, you know, city. And I want to show you something, actually, on this, so, this is, oops. So, for example, so, this is one thing I wanted to talk about, so, there is the concept or the idea of sharing innovation, or sharing the outcomes of innovation, especially for small cities. For example, in Europe, they try to, I'm from Jerusalem, so I come from also an area where there is a lot of innovation. So, it's a different context, but also, in Europe, and across other countries in the Middle East as well, so there are those concepts of sharing the outcomes of innovations and social innovation projects. So, how can you do that if there is no online interactions and connections between actors that are in the innovation and social innovation space? And I think those platforms that were created recently, the two, the one in the UK and the other one in Europe, are actually created to achieve that objective. And so, I think if we are to be, to build that model here, we can be one of the pioneers in building such a platform, and I, actually, in the concept I have written, I said, "My preferred launchpad for this platform is Kingston," and the university, the flagship university is Queen's. And then, of course, we want to bring other universities as well. So, this can be, you know, customized for the needs in the economic development needs, and attracting businesses and innovators and entrepreneurs. And I think as we connect with other cities through the sharing of innovations, the outcomes of innovations and social innovations, we can then attract investors and entrepreneurs to contribute to achieving our goals here in Kingston. They don't have to physically come to Kingston, but we can have their ideas arrive in here and contribute to the economic, you know, development objectives that you would like to accomplish in this city.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Counselor Stroud.
So, I think I understand on a very basic level what your, what your idea is, and that is the, what we've already seen in social media platforms and how they've connected people from wherever in the world through the digital media, using the principles of that connectivity for, specifically, for Kingston and for economic development, especially for entrepreneurs and young businesses. And it's that connectivity between, through the platform, between similar interests and that idea sharing that drives the engine for growth. Is that correct?
Yes. So, and just to be honest, when I started working on this, I was in Waterloo. I didn't think, I didn't know even I was coming to Kingston and Queen's, but when I came here and I started going to meetings, including coming to public meetings here, and understanding what is happening, and even myself going through, you know, some of the challenges, so this is where I feel this is really a good place for this platform to be launched and advanced, I think.
Thank you. And thank you very much for a very interesting and eye-opening presentation.
Thanks. Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Our third delegation this evening is Kim Donovan, Regan Campbell, and Michael Kouts, Friends of Kingston, who will appear before council to speak to the motion with respect to the recommendations from the KEDCO Review Committee 2016.
First of all, I'd like to thank council and you, Your Worship, for the opportunity to speak to you here tonight. My name is Regan Campbell. I'm a native of Kingston and an entrepreneur as well, and I'm here to talk to you about economic development, obviously, which is critically important to our community, and the decision that you make here in the next few weeks is going to impact our future in Kingston for years to come. Our Economic Development Agency has failed us, and now, we have a chance to change that. We implore you not to adopt a flawed, unsubstantiated, and inadequate report, and not to continue to support an organization that has failed to provide growth, failed to provide jobs, failed to provide accountability, and failed to be transparent in how they use tax dollars. Under KEDCO, the trend of unemployment and business leaving Kingston is increasing. There is no urgency to adopt this report and no need to fast-track it. We cannot squander the opportunity to plan our future. We want to get it right. We have to get it right. Using the capability and experience of those in this community that are qualified to do so, we wish to reap what we sow as a generation, which means forward-thinking, attracting new, vibrant economic investment opportunities to the city. We are unique. We are a city with the heart of a small town. What Kingston needs is to develop a new, homegrown solution for economic development to stay ahead of the curve. A culture and an atmosphere where young innovators and entrepreneurs come and stay here because they have the ability to access the resources and the support services that they need to bring their ideas to fruition. Attracting new, smart investments to Kingston requires us to truly foster innovation, and in order to do that, we need a platform that is robust and inclusive in order to harness the economic potential of the city. And actually, such is the platform as the previous delegation just suggested, which I found very interesting as well. An online medium where we can connect people with resources all over the place, and there's no, no need to run around the city trying to search them out. It's all there online. I think it's very interesting. So, our task here today is to decide how to best achieve this goal.
My name is Michael Kouts, third-generation Kingstonian and a successful entrepreneur for almost a decade, for over a decade. When I was starting a business in Kingston, I approached KEDCO. Despite its repeated attempts to get help and guidance and support, they did not provide it. Instead, a number of recognized business leaders expressed their sincere interest in wanting to foster my ideas, ambitions, and drive in building a successful business in this city, and agreed to provide valuable mentorship and support. It was Kingston's business community that reached out to me and gave me what I needed to get my company started towards success. Reliance on public sector jobs is not sustainable. Instead, we require high-paying, private-sector jobs in both existing and newly recruited companies that are able to succeed in today's challenging economic environment, ensuring future generations are given better opportunities than what is currently available in our community. KEDCO is broken beyond repair. It cannot be reorganized or rebranded. We need a completely new way forward, which is best obtained by request for proposal. An RFP will, one, generate innovative ideas and plans for business and entrepreneurial community with input from internationally-recognized experts; two, provide counsel with the ability to require, as part of the RFP, ongoing control through transparency, accountability, and performance metrics; and three, result in reduced costs.
I'm Kim Donovan. I came to Kingston 21 years ago to lead Kincor Holdings Limited, a real estate development firm focusing on heritage redevelopment and revitalization. The review report and agenda are basically the foundation for a good RFP process. Why does the agenda have to apply to KEDCO? It doesn't. KEDCO has lost the trust of the community. This is Kingston's chance to develop a model that works for us. It doesn't matter if it's not a model used in another city. We need to do what is right for us. Why not a unique solution for our unique city?
Thirty seconds.
The business community is willing to step up and volunteer their expertise and ideas. Their hearts and minds are engaged in the idea of growing Kingston. Why push them away? The RFP process will allow council to assess different ways to accomplish economic goals, and will allow the business and entrepreneurial community to be heard. We welcome your questions, and Ewan McKinnon has been able to join with us in those. One final summation, is there time?
Thank you, but I will take questions, so if there are questions, then you can respond to them. Are there questions from council? Counselor Stroud.
Yes, and I remember this, this idea from last time we spoke, and Mr. McKinnon, Mr. Kouts were here with Mr. Data. So, the, is there any reason, I'll get right to the point, is there any reason why, if we went with an RFP process based on the recommendations in the report, is there any reason why the current organization could not apply for that RFP like everybody else?
No, I think the RFP process would be open to the public, and so, as a third-party, arms-length organization, like the other people, you'd like to participate in the RFP process, KEDCO would be welcome as well.
So, it seems to me that is a bit of a win-win, because testing the market, starting from scratch, it would be gaining the trust of the community, and also, allowing all bidders, including the current organization, which should theoretically have an advantage because they have experience in this market.
So, okay, is that a question?
No, no, I was just sort of summing up what he was saying. I do have it. I do have other questions.
Question, please.
Yes. So would, do you think that if we went in this way, the negative rhetoric and the criticisms that we've heard about the past performance, do you think that would inform us and allow us to turn it into a positive? Would it be put to bed, or would we continually refer to it? How do you think, what would happen to those types of comments?
That's a good question. I think the RFP process would allow the community and council to move forward in a way that is in itself open and transparent. Like we mentioned before, the city procures many goods and services, all of which are subject to the procurement bylaw, and this is no different. These are economic development services, and there's a process in place that would allow the city to purchase those services. And that's open and transparent, and people already recognize that as a viable process. And so to answer the question, I think that if such a process was pursued, that it would allow, it would allow the community to move forward in a beneficial way, and allow economic development services to be provided in a manner that is subject to public scrutiny.
Counsel Neal.
Just one very quick question. Correct me if I'm wrong, but is it true that economic development RFPs, that there's certain level of funding that we get federally and provincially that is dependent on not, on it going to not-for-profit corporations? In other words, if we had a wide-open RFP, private sector, in fact, might be precluded because, in fact, that would cut off some of our sources of funding? Perhaps you could speak to that.
There are, if I understand correctly, provincial and federal funding is tied or provided to municipalities or nonprofit organizations. And so if that was a requirement for the RFP process, or if that's a requirement to maintain that funding, then that could easily be written into the RFP that it was only open to nonprofit organizations. I think the city has already done something very similar to what we're proposing with Innovate Kingston. That's a group of private-sector individuals who have come together, who have partnered with the city. They receive public funds to work in a specific segment of economic development, the ICT field, and it has, it seems to have been well-received. And so what we're suggesting is that there's an opportunity to do the same thing now in a broader sense, or perhaps to additional segments of the economic development portfolio. And so in response to your question, if they are tied together, then that's simply something that needs to be included in the scope of the RFP.
Thank you.
Counsel Rosenek.
Thank you, your worship. I just have one question, and it can be for any of the delegates, because you all own your own business. So how could, like, the new ideal economic development office help your company expand so, to enable you to hire more people? Because that's what we want, our economic development office, is to hire more people and, you know, like, for businesses that they help with. So how could a new EDO help your business expand?
I, I, what's else? Yeah, go ahead. I think, going back to the previous delegation, again, this is the first time I'd seen that presentation, obviously, but the ability to have open access to people looking for employment right there online, I know those types of platforms exist right now, but it's not comprehensive. You don't have, as he was alluding to, you don't have investors, for example, that are online, looking at different companies and different geographical regions to invest, whereas, you know, that's something that could be very useful, especially for my company, for example. If you're looking for an investor, you're looking for employees, it's right there online.
So I've come and gone from the city about four times. My background is advertising and marketing, and even during the downtimes, when I didn't have a business of my own, I was looking for employment in the city in advertising and marketing. And as you can imagine, it's very limited, because a lot of the medias are based out of larger cities, such as Toronto, Ottawa, Montreal. But if there were more economic development investment opportunities coming into the, coming into the city, then that would, that would provide opportunities for startup companies, startup marketing companies. It could be a team of two or three running local campaigns or local initiatives for those new businesses coming into town. So it's a huge trickle effect, so.
So, sorry, Kim.
I think that a more effective organization would achieve what you're asking. That organization, we foresee being very small in terms of its staffing requirements, and very large in terms of the amount of community volunteerism that would drive that. There is a significant number of people in this business community. I speak for some of them directly through Friends of Kingston and many more. 160 people offered to be on the review committee, for example. So there is so much talent and commitment in this community, and we want to harness that, and that's what this RFP process does. It opens it up to a process that is open and accountable, transparent, back to the objectives that you set. So how are we going to achieve our ability to grow businesses? We're going to have a more effective organization that's going to help us do exactly that.
Counsel Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Back to Mr. Kautz, Michael. You'd said no help from KEDCO, but then you reached out to the business community. Who was that? Like, was it the Chamber of Commerce? How did you find a business community if KEDCO wasn't there?
Yeah, so it was just through networking, through various people, you know, such as Bernie Robinson, who's a huge advocate for community health, developing a smart community. There's Kim Donovan, there's a number of individuals. We've had success through Launch Lab as well. I'll definitely have to give them some credit for moving our business forward. But they, Launch Lab is also built from the private sector as well, very successful, internationally-recognized individuals, some of whom I've known for 15, 20 years. I knew them since I was, you know, yai big, and after coming back from my travels, it's just, you know, the great thing about Kingston is it's a small town with a large city heart, and that community support, the business community support, like, okay, we like what you got here, let's harness what you have and accelerate it, let's incubate it. So it's because of the business community we got to where, you know, we are where we are, so.
There is some, oh yes, Counsel George.
Thank you, your worship. I have two questions. First one to Mr. Donovan. I'm wondering if you could read for me what your summation was? And then I have a second question.
Council has already adopted this process with Innovate Kingston, and it seems to make sense. Why not just carry that idea through? Let's summon the courage as a community necessary to embrace a new way forward with a new organization that will ensure Kingston's ability to thrive and become the innovative, smart city we aspire to be, bringing Kingston's strategic plan to life.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Second question, anyone of you gentlemen could answer, or maybe as a group. Do you feel that if this was to go to an RFP process, are there specific recommendations within the review document that you don't like, or do you feel there are recommendations in there that could be included inside of an RFP process in order to at least give some insight as to what we as a city are looking for?
Yes, we'd like to work together to refine the list of requirements that you've already got a great start on. We think there's more. Some may be limiting, and we'd like to open it up, and we'd like, it's a working group, we want everyone's input. We want a robust RFP that we can really reach out and get the combined will and capability of our community. And we all know how much dedication and commitment there is to achieve that. So we have a great start, though, in the documents you already have.
All right, thank you.
Counsel Allen.
Thank you, your worship. And through you, I also have two questions. Three, at least three times in your presentation, you've talked about new investment, new companies and new opportunities coming to Kingston, something that in, both in the review report and in the general sort of economic development language, is something that communities are moving away from, and they're looking to grow existing businesses and support entrepreneurs in the growth of their businesses. So that seems like it's going in a different direction than the conversations that we've been having. And so I guess I'd like to understand from you why that attraction, which can be quite costly for an organization to engage in and high-risk, is so important to you.
I don't think that's what we're saying at all. New ideas, new companies, those are entrepreneurs, those are one and the same.
Okay, I just, you did say very clearly that new companies, you wanted to bring new companies with jobs to Kingston. But I'll move on to my second question. Mr. Kautz indicated no support from KEDCO, and I think some of you have similar experiences with the no support. I guess I want to know what you mean by support. So if an economic development organization, whatever we're doing moving forward tonight, what is that support that didn't exist? Is that investment, or is that, what is that support that wasn't there for you?
We talked about this before, about how small business consultations with KEDCO involved a one-on-one meeting where pamphlets were provided, and that was the consultation process. And so what we're hearing is that was inadequate, and that there are better supports out there, and I think that's what we're talking about tonight, is how do we achieve that? And part of that is opening up the scope to something like the RFP process, so that we're moving ahead, moving forward from that. Maybe Mr. Kautz, or are we going to get like?
I think it also revolves around resources that are allocated, and it's the same resources that we were speaking about earlier, which is not only funding, but mentorship, right? It comes down to being able to work with somebody who knows your business, they know what you're trying to do. You can call them at seven o'clock at night if you need to, because that's what entrepreneurs do. We work all the time. If I need to call somebody seven o'clock, I need to call somebody at seven o'clock. And that, those are the type of people that you need to support you when you're first starting. And in my opinion, KEDCO did not offer anything even close to that. It was very difficult to get any direction in terms of, you know, where are sources of funding that we can seek out, you know, where are different resources that we can learn about, you know, things for the Ministry of Environment, for example, if we're working on a project like that, or there's just, there's a lot missing there, so.
Yes. And with the, you know, the local mentorship, it's emotion, you know, the care about you, they want to see you succeed, right? They look at you and they're like, you know, once upon a time I was your age, you know, a struggling entrepreneur, back in the 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s, going through the ups and downs. It's more about the emotion, you know, they care for you, about moving forward. And that really ties into your caring for you as a person, caring for the community. It's, a lot of it has to do with emotion.
If I could just add one thing. If we left any impression with you, Counselor Allen, that the focus is not on growing our existing businesses, that would be wrong of us to leave you with that impression. Growth and retention, I co-chaired a committee, the prosperity, jobs and prosperity committee with KEDCO back many years ago, and we see the resources that are in our community as being vital to growing. So we're talking about taking those and helping grow those businesses. So when we have discussions about what incentives we have to offer for new businesses, which is a wonderful discussion to have to have, and all the hand-wringing over what we can do, we want to make sure that we also recognize that the existing businesses we have, as they grow, we want to make the path to their growth just as easy and facilitative as well. So I realize development charges pay for the growth that our city needs in investments we've made, and I realize that that's how the development charges bylaw works. However, there are also times when we have opportunity to negotiate those and to look at opportunities to incent growth, and I know that's what we're all about. We're hopeful that some of the savings that we're going to be able to represent through this process will allow us to have more opportunity to do exactly that and keep that within the municipal act.
Counsel Caden.
Thank you, and through you. With regards to the Innovate Kingston concept or model, regardless of what happens this evening, what is stopping you from creating a model like that organically within the community and kind of taking on a leadership role or volunteer role, regardless of what happens this evening? So when you leave here tonight, is there anything preventing you from fulfilling the desires that you have? Because I agree, there are a lot of people who, I think that Kim made a good point when he said that there was a lot of people who volunteered to be on a committee, but they didn't have a spot. You may create a, what's stopping you from creating the vision that you have regardless of what happens tonight?
I suppose nothing. We're looking for council to support that vision, though, just like they supported Innovate Kingston in their vision.
Yes, and it's the balance of our economic development. Your report says, maintain your small business development corporation and allow it to be the focal point where all of our government funding is clearly identified, because there's so many different sources now of job creation and funding available. So we'd like to see that as a very well-focused provision of that service. We've got tourism being separated off, if that's what happens in the recommendations of the report. So there's pure economic development left, and that's building on our existing base of business and corporate success we have here, and then adding to that. And all together, we think we can tell a story about Kingston that's much more powerful, because when you have successful business people leading the charge with a tight, small core of staff that's supporting it in the research and database and, you know, managing those other functions, the work of the volunteers can be very powerful.
Are there any other questions? Counsel Hutchinson.
I just want to be clear about one thing. Are you looking for city funding for any successful proponent to the RFP process? And would that funding be more than a supply to Innovate Kingston?
The city provided funding to Innovate Kingston through a variety of means, and that was all part of their proposal and their discussions with the city and how they arrived at that. And so we'd be looking for an open process to do that. So yes, that, there would be funding from the city, to what extent, you know, maybe up to and equal to what's happening now, but that's not what we're asking for directly. There's a large amount of money that's currently being used to fund economic development, and we're suggesting that a portion of that funds, or all of it, if that's the way you'd like to go, be used to explore other options of affecting that, just like the Innovate Kingston model.
And I think the RFP process will define that. If we put that in, we see what kind of bids come back to us. I know Ewan just said that the amount has not been determined, and it's not been determined, but we do think we can do it with significantly less resources and use a lot of volunteer time and commitment to cover the balance.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, before we move on, are there any other delegations to be added this evening? Oh, Counsel Turner.
Thank you, and through you, your worship. I'd like to request permission to add a delegation this evening. The Clause 11.4 and 11.5 of the City of Kingston Procedure by law 2010-1 be waived in order to allow Shay Dubay, Chair of KEDCO, Board of Directors, and Board of Directors Bill Dunford and David Carnegie to speak to the KEDCO Review Report.
Okay, so we have a motion to add a delegation. Is there a second or? Seconded by Counsel Allen. We'll call the vote. Are there any other delegations to add? Okay, seeing none, then I will invite Shay Dubay, Bill Dunford, and Dave Carnegie to speak to council to the motion with respect to the rec. speak to council to the motion with respect to the recommendations in the KEDCO review committee.
Thank you, worship and counselors. I'll just be very brief. You're going to have a very interesting discussion coming up, and this is not about whether, which way this should go. What I wanted to do is to put a face on KEDCO. I mean, KEDCO has become this nebulous entity that exists out there, but really, it's made up of people. And what you're seeing are the board of directors that are there. People keep saying there's not a lot of business experience, but if you take a look, there's actually a fair amount of business experience that's on that board. And your nomination committee actually put everybody onto that board. There's also a tremendous number of staff that have been working diligently throughout this process and making sure that economic development goes on. And again, they don't get any recognition, so, you know, this is for me to stand up to, to acknowledge what's happening. The board has been silent through this process, only because it did not want to taint the process as it had started it. And is now for us to come out and start to address some of those issues that are there. In the letter that's in front of you, are those are the things that have been going on? We haven't been sitting back and not doing anything. We've actually been listening to what's come through the delegations, and a lot of the changes have been made. We talk about transparency. There are two members of your council that sit on our finance committee that see every single receipt that goes through, and they report back to you at that point. Advisory committees, those have already been started to be formed, to bring in the people in the community to advise as to where economic development should go to. This is the volunteerism. This was started actually back last September, even before the review committee started. Just a little bit about me. I'm one of those graduates that wanted to stay in Kingston and didn't have the opportunity. Four, five years after I graduated, I came back to run a business that was located out of Kingston. It was the first online database company in the world. That was why I came back and decided to stay. Now, I had two young children, and that's why, for me, I agree, there's a lot of very good discussions that have gone on. Economic development and the, the future of the city is extremely important for all of us. And with that, I wanted to turn it over to the two of the newest board members that have come on, and I'll turn it over to Bill Durnford to talk about his.
Thank you, Shay, and looking forward to the discussion tonight for sure. I'm Bill Durnford, just joined the Board of KEDCO back in January, but I'm not new to the EDC environment. I moved to Kingston about four years ago to take a position with the Hospital Foundation, but prior to that, I was, spent 25 years in the hotel business. My last position was the General Manager of the Holiday Inn in Sault Ste. Marie, and during that time, I sat on the EDC Board in the Sioux for six years, and through that created the Division Tourism Sault Ste. Marie as a division of the EDC. And I was the inaugural Chair of Tourism Sault Ste. Marie for six years. And it allowed us a process to fully engage the, the tourism community, brought together the hotels and motels, the attractions, the restaurants, the retail, all speaking as one, formulating a strategic plan, marketing plans, and the spend. We introduced a destination marketing fee, which garnered a lot more dollars. We invested some of those dollars in our new multi-use sports and entertainment facility up there, the SR Center, which levered additional money, a million and a half dollars from the province at the time. So I'm certainly looking forward to what's being proposed, and we, we sort of had a hybrid model up there in terms of tourism development and the industry engagement. So I'm looking forward to what's being proposed and how we move forward on that. And from what I've seen so far, there's been fantastic collaboration between the tourism sector and, and KEDCO in the last, last 12 months, and certainly in the last few months that I've been directly involved with, with KEDCO, and especially with the Kingston Accommodation Partners and, and Downtown Kingston and those like organizations, and the attractions seem to be really working well together. So I think there's a great opportunity for, for the industry and the community engagement. And certainly, I don't think there's any argument that tourism is an important part of economic development, as is the business development side. And I'll pass it over to Dave Carnegie.
Good evening. I'm Dave Carnegie. I moved to Kingston 16 years ago, and like many students, I thought I would leave after four years to chase opportunity elsewhere. Instead, I built my career here, became, or started my family here, and eventually became an entrepreneur here. When you choose to be an entrepreneur in Kingston, particularly in the innovation space, people ask you why. And I became involved with KEDCO because it represents an organization that is asking why not.
Thirty seconds.
And what I'd like to see is that we continue to support the why not. Many people have spoken tonight about models that help to build that ecosystem. I don't think it has to be one organization sustaining the entire ecosystem. The reality is, is it's, there's a lot of different roles that need to be played, and there's lots of room for everybody to support building that ecosystem.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the delegation? Counselor Neal.
Yes, just two. The, the chair mentioned all appointees are nominations, city nominations committee. Are you aware that, and unless it's changed, I'm no longer on the nominations committee, but I was for four years. And it's always a list of names that we receive from KEDCO with the advice that we've received that because they're a corporation, they're, under the Corporations Act, we should endorse the request for names. I've always kind of bristled at that idea, thinking that council should be more engaged in the process of selection. Are you aware that that's the process that has been followed, I believe, most recently?
I'm not sure of the process most recently. I know that in 2007, when the nominations committee took over the appointments, they actually questioned and interviewed all of the candidates that were there. So I'm not aware of what's gone on since I was just put forward in front of the nominations committee last year.
Thank you. And you also mentioned that the, that the finance committee saw every receipt. It's, again, it's my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that in fact the finance committee often saw the kind of month-end credit card receipts, but not, never drilled much deeper than that in the past. Perhaps that's changed again.
In the past, you're correct, Counselor Neal. Starting in January, they actually are getting copies of every single receipt.
I appreciate that. It is new and improved, at least from that aspect. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Allen.
I, I was actually, and I work, I'm on the board of KEDCO, so I have a relationship here, but as a counselor, I was actually interested in what Mr. Durnford had to say about tourism in the EDC, because we haven't really talked about that both at the board and, and we're, we're having a lot of conversations about separating tourism from the EDC economic development activities here. So I, I just wanted to get a sense of why you made that choice to integrate, because I, I guess, from what I got from your speech, you, you chose to make that happen in Sault Ste. Marie, and, and how that benefited your economic development efforts. Because it's just, we're hearing a lot of arguments for the reverse, and I just wanted to hear a little bit more about the, the experience you had pulling them together.
Okay, so when I first arrived back in Sioux a number of years ago, I got on the, got on the EDC Board, mainly as a hotel operator, because I wanted to see about, look at opportunities to advance the destination marketing effort for the city. At the time, there was, I think, one or one and a half people kind of focusing on destination marketing for the city. And so I saw an opportunity to grow that. So we created what we referred to as a management committee that initially that I worked with as a EDC Board member and a hotel operator, made up again of hotels and motels, the restaurants, the attractions, major retail, the downtown organizations, to try and gather together input as to our marketing strategies and work with the person that was currently employed as the, as the tourism person. Through an ongoing process of consultation with the industry and kind of working, working with the, with the EDC Board, we created, we formally created a division of the EDC, Tourism Sault Ste. Marie, and we went about to, to hire a full-time executive director and then staffed up. Now there's a, currently a staff of about six or seven at Tourism Sault Ste. Marie. That executive director is still in place and has done a fantastic job. But that allowed, and we, and the management committee stayed in place, and I, as the Chair of Tourism Sault Ste. Marie, and through that agreement, had a place at the board table at the EDC. So there's that connectivity between the industry and, and the board of the, of the EDC. And that management committee really acted as, for all intents and purposes, a board of directors for Tourism Sault Ste. Marie and Destination Marketing, but we didn't have the governance constraints, and we could act a little more freely. But we, at the same time, were able to take advantage of the larger administrative infrastructure within the Economic Development Corporation. So our focus and our efforts and our money can be focused on marketing the destination as opposed to office space and keeping the lights on and, and that sort of thing. So what I've seen, what's recommended in the, in the review committee report, is my understanding that that is, is a result of some consultation with the tourism industry here in Kingston with their interest, which I can completely support and understand, their interest in maintaining and growing and continuing to have a straight, a strong focus on tourism and tourism development and, and growing that, because we certainly have a fantastic destination, tourism destination here in Kingston, second to none in, in my opinion. So that's just sort of gives you a quick overview of, of the model that we initiated up there.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council? Counselor Stroh.
Thank you, worship. Just curious what you would think if you were required to, as was suggested by previous delegations, to submit an RFP process, and whether you have the capacity to do that, and what you think about that idea?
It's, it's, it's an option that's open to council, and the SLA that they're talking about is actually, in some senses, partly an RFP already, that's going to have to be put in place. So, I mean, if you take a look at the budget presentation that was done last year, the 63 pages, that was very similar to an RFP coming to you anyway.
Thank you.
Counselor Turner.
Thank you. I was just wondering, do we have any idea how much this would cost to separate the two? Just any ballpark, any idea?
We are still in the process at the moment of, of working that out, because we, we need to figure out how overheads are going to be divided. So given the short timeframe, that we've talked to legal accounting as well to try to understand what these costs are going to look like and what overheads will look like. Because again, how large each of the organizations will, will also determine and where they're located. So there's, there's a lot still to be worked out in the detail. The, the report is fairly broad, but the devil unfortunately is in the details.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question for Mr. Carnegie. So we've, we've discussed a lot tonight about creating an environment that supports innovation and entrepreneurship. That is one of our strategic priorities as council. As a young entrepreneur yourself, do you have any perspective on, is there a particular model that is better suited towards that? So everything from pulling economic development into City Hall, to an arms-length organization, to putting it in RFP. In your mind, is there any one model that's better for that, or are there other considerations we should be thinking of?
The, personally, I, I don't have a strong preference. I see the advantage of the current structure is that you have people who are actively part of the entrepreneurship and business community on the board, who have a vested interest in helping to build that community. So some of my mentors were previous board members, but there were also other people in the community that, that I just came to know through other activities, like rowing or, or through the university community. But the mentorship piece is, is difficult, and when you are an outsider, there, it is very hard to tap into that network. So for, for me personally, it took me a long time to, to build that network. So if you're somebody who's making a shotgun decision about Toronto or Kitchener, Waterloo, those are communities where, in large part, most people are outsiders. So I think in some ways, it feels like a little bit more of an accepting community. Now that I've been in the community for so long, you know, I've walked that path a little bit, and I'm looking for opportunities to, to both grow myself, I'm still very young, but also to, to maybe help the next group come up.
Thank you. So seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Okay, so with that, we have no briefings, any petitions, we have no motions of congratulations, deferred motions. So I'm going to skip right down to new motions. New motion number one, that council resolve itself into the Committee of the Whole to consider the motion with respect to the recommendations from the KEDCO Review Committee 2016 summary report and assessment. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Osannick. And that carries. So we are now in Committee of the Whole, and just, just for the benefit of the new counselors that maybe haven't been used to this format, so we are now, will allow for multiple speaking opportunities. However, I'm still going to hold you to a five-minute time limit per round. So what we will do is I'll give everybody a chance to speak in the first round, and then after that, then I will look for an opportunity for people to be able to speak, and I'll start a second round at that point. Okay? Just a couple of guidelines as the chair as we move into this discussion. First of all, I'm going to implore council not to get into wordsmithing. There is a lot that's before us tonight, so my, I only ask is that any amendments would be more substantive, rather than just wordsmithing. And, and then also, I'm going to ask that council refrain from getting into any implementation of where we're going to go. This meeting is very much establishing the political direction of what direction we're going to go, and then the implementation of that is going to be a second step as well. So with that said, new motion number two, moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Mayor Patterson, that the following recommendations, as referenced in the KEDCO Review Committee 2016 summary report and assessment be approved. I'm not going to read them at this stage, but there are three under economic development objectives and directions. There are 10 under governance, structure, and operations. Four under transparency and accountability. Six under performance measurement. Three under financial operations. And four under communications and public engagement. And then after those recommendations, the motion says that staff in cooperation with KEDCO be directed to implement the aforementioned recommendations. Counselor Neal, as the mover, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank Counselor George and the mayor for accepting the idea of Committee of the Whole. It's something this council and the previous council seldom, if ever, did. But I know previous councils, when we've dealt with very complex and sometimes contentious issues, going into Committee of the Whole to be able to give a full opportunity for a very fulsome discussion, I think is a good thing. And I promise not to filibuster. I, I have to say that the debate is going to be contentious, and it has been very complex. Seldom are decisions of this sort right or wrong. When we pass this motion, it doesn't make for the correction of problems within economic development happen. Going to wax existential for a moment. We'll make it the correct decision by how we go about implementing all of these recommendations. And I, I will support any amendment that clarifies or strengthens the intent of this motion and the intent of the, of the report, but unless there's a very compelling reason to do otherwise, I won't support any amendment that's contrary to the report and recommendation. We established a review committee. We appointed, I think, some very good community members, and two, I have to say, the two counselors we appointed were the ones that were most frequently critical of or questioning of, of the whole KEDCO regime. And so I, I think we, and they worked under very, very difficult conditions. Never before have I seen a community advisory committee that faced the, the kind of personal criticism that sometimes took place. that faced the kind of personal criticism that sometimes took place. And that's really, really unfortunate. We count on community volunteers to be able to help us to do our work. And it's unfortunate that they were faced with some of those things. So I think we need to respect their work. And I will say, all of these conditions that we see here, I think are good conditions. And if carried out with whatever form of economic development we take in the future, I think we'll have a better economic development organization. The very last thing, I had a little bit of pause about, and that's undertake a rebranding exercise for the standalone economic development organization. This has got to be more than just changing the sign on the door and changing the letterhead. KETCO, for whatever reason, the word has become, and this is unfortunate, but it's become almost toxic in the community. Some of it, some of those criticisms are well-deserved. Some of them aren't. And I think from now on, when I talk about KETCO, I'm going to be talking about our previous economic development organization. And from now on, I want to refer to the Economic Development Organization as our go-forward economic development group that we are just now formulating. I agree with--
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. I agree with these. I have a couple of questions, if I can, of senior staff. We have here a recommendation for a well-defined service agreement. And I'm just curious whether our CAO feels that with an appropriate service agreement, well-defined, if we can accomplish the criteria that's laid out, that this motion lays out, including establishing a performance matrix to ensure the criteria are fulfilled.
Cao Hunt.
So based on that question, I think we have to consider that there's a number of different recommendations in here that will need to be implemented over time. Whether or not the specifics of a service level agreement can touch on all of them is probably not doable. But certainly, the criteria, the expectations, the results and the measurement are things that can be formed and are considered as part of the Review Committee's recommendations to form the basis. And there has been some examples included in the recommendations of service level agreements that have worked very effectively in other municipalities. So that would be the guide that we would be working from.
One specific, to be specific, about one other question. I know, and I was relieved to see, that KETCO agreed with the motion that went forward requesting all organizations that receive 50% or more of their funding should abide by the Sunshine List. And in fact, they have agreed to do so. Is that something that could be a requirement of a service agreement?
Cao Hunt.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. You know, certainly some of those reporting requirements can be parts of the service agreement. I would say, though, that if there was a particular legislation that related to whatever the corporate structure or the corporate establishing regulation of an entity, if that was something that precluded some type of reporting of that nature, it would have to take precedent over the service level agreement. But certainly, from a voluntary perspective, that would be something that KETCO has made a decision on and would be something we'd be working with as well in the agreement.
So unless trumped by provincial or federal legislation, we could, in fact, achieve that?
We would certainly look to do just that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Next on my list is Counselor Cannon.
Thank you, and through you. Just to give you a brief overview of how I feel we got here. I know that Counselor McLaren and myself, when we were knocking on doors to get elected, we did hear that a lot of people were reasonably discontent with the results of our Economic Development Office. And after hearing a lot of different people bring it up to me, I decided to bring it up at Council. And there were various community members who brought up their comments and concerns as well. And it got to the point where we had to strike a review committee. Once we struck the review committee, we had town halls where tempers boiled over and people spoke about the things that they weren't happy with. We had an interactive meeting at Queen's University. The Mayor had a survey. We had numerous delegations. And we hired an industry leader out of the University of Waterloo to help record our findings and allow for a meaningful discussion to happen. And what I found is that if you were to compartmentalize what the issues were, it was usually based on results and communication or transparency. So we tried to facilitate tools that would help implement better results and better communication moving forward. And what we found from all of these different things that we did in the community to try to receive input is come up with these various tools to do that. So one of them being, not necessarily being a leader in every single industry, one of the criticisms that we had was that our Economic Development Office was a mile wide but an inch deep. And we're trying to focus our attention, which is why we separated economic development and tourism. And I think that what Counselor Neal had mentioned with regards to rebranding, I think that that is the most important part because everyone seems to be talking about separating tourism and economic development. But the most important part, where a lot of the criticism was, was the business component of our EDO. So that rebranding is extremely important and I'm very interested to see the results that come out of that if we do endorse this. And with regards to the delegation that we had with the gentleman from Friends of Kingston, when people said that, I feel like a lot of people felt resentment towards our Economic Development Office because our community wasn't embedded within our Economic Development Office. It's almost as if our Economic Development Office is on one side of the room and the community was on another. So we're doing these community-based committees to help guide transparency and to help guide special fields. So say the sales and marketing of our employment land. So we're looking at experts within those fields and try to embed them within our Economic Development Office to take part in the success of the community. So that was one thing that the people from Friends of Kingston and various other people had said. And this is a tool that we're trying to create that change. We're creating new measurables and having service contracts with the city, which isn't, certainly isn't an RFP, but it was our way to provide some neutrality towards that and try to help accommodate some of those criticisms within the community. So these are all tools that I feel are trying to solve the biggest criticisms, which are results and communication or transparency. And it's certainly not something where you're going to be able to snap your fingers and solve all the problems. But as I mentioned before, I think this is a way of cranking the wheel in the right direction. The one delegation, the gentleman from Friends of Kingston, I think that I would support their ambition and energy and intent to improve the community. And if they do come up with an organization that tries to improve the community, I'd love to take part in that. But I do think that they can work together. And I think that this is something that the community has worked to create and I hope that you endorse it.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Counselor Schell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Yes, it has been a very long and very contentious process at times. I realize this could be time for a statement. I will be presenting an amendment to two of the pieces here. In terms of economic development, that is not my forte and I accepted that early on when this process was happening. But tourism has been my big one for a long time. I used to say, why isn't Kingston the Prince Edward County of Eastern Ontario? And when I read this, separate tourism Kingston into a standalone arms-length organization with its own Board of Directors, staff and mandate, I felt like tourism was a small piece of this report, whereas to me, it's a huge opportunity for the City of Kingston. And I'll mention a few of the things that I have found a problem with and why I've made the motion that will be coming up. We have a huge variety of people who are running tourism right now. We have the City of Kingston bookings. We have a special events department. We have the culture department. We have St. Lawrence Parks Commission. We have private boat tour and trolley companies. We have dive companies, fishing companies, some of the best fishing in North America, diving, some of the best in the world. Summer theater now run by culture. We have parasailing kiteboarding competitions privately run. Agritourism as a desire to get moving. We have walking tourist, cultural tourism through the tourism department. We have 20 museums privately run and two city-owned museums. We have a massive amount of product, it's usually called, and an incredible Kingston Accommodation Partners. And sports tourism, which I think KETCO would agree for many years was their focus. But we have a much broader range of things for people to do. And as Darren Dogleish, who is now running the St. Lawrence Parks Commission, said, we are ripe for an incredible boom in tourism if we get it right and if we get it connected. So I have proposed an amendment that is on Governance Part Two. And of course, it's disappeared off my machine. But I think that the clerk has it, no, here we go. That the mandate of the separate tourism Kingston organization include the implementation of an integrated tourism strategy as described in City's Council 2015-18 Strategic Plan, which is a tourism strategy, and this is seconded by the Mayor. Working with community partners will continue to align tourism, marketing and attraction strategies, creating greater return on investment and refocusing marketing strategies. That's what this Council said we want to do.
Okay, can we just get that up on the screen, please?
So however we wind up separating tourism Kingston out, if we decide to, I certainly want us to realize that we have a big potential in the city that we have to make sure is well-integrated so that we can promote it properly.
Okay, so there is a motion to amend on the floor. It is to add the following clause at the end of the recommendations. So we will now start a new round of speaking only on the amendment, please. Counselor Neal.
Yes, I totally support this amendment. I think one of the strengths of both the report and the recommendation was recognizing that tourism Kingston, although it was being well-funded in the funding formula, probably was punching below its weight as far as achieving things. And I really look forward to the makeup of the new Board for that organization. There are so many groups. CAP is one, but St. Lawrence Parks Commission, the Parks Canada, there's all kinds of very engaged, very active, the boat, the scenic boat tour operators. All of those groups could and should have a place at that table. And I think there's more opportunities to access provincial and federal dollars to enhance our tourism. So it isn't just the city money that would be going towards enhancing tourism in Kingston, but it would be those people at the table being able to reach out and convince other levels of government to help with tourism initiatives. So I totally support the amendment. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Counselor George.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have no problem supporting this in the sense that I truly believe they should be in line with our strategic planning. The problem I personally have is with the funding. On the economic side, I can see the benefits that we garner in the municipality. We see growth, so we recognize that there's imposed fees paid, there's development charges fees paid. A lot of those monies that go towards fixing our potholes, our parks, everything else, where do I see that when we give the money to tourism? I get a lot of, you know, comments from the general public out there. But, and I know I'm getting a little off-topic, so I will support this solely for the reason that it's dealing with putting them in line with our strategic plan and I'll speak to the other at another time.
Okay, I think that would be best. Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak only to the amendment, please? Counselor Hutchinson.
Can we ask questions of staff? It seems to me that the KETCO with the tourism included in it already is charged with following the City's general strategic plan. Is that, I just wanted to ask staff if I'm correct in that we ask all agencies to follow the general tenets of our strategic plan?
Cao Hunt.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I would suggest that Council has made it clear to external agencies that the direction in the strategic plan is part of the focus that should be priority for those agencies in addition to the city services and departments. This particular focus was, and has been recently led at the initiative of CAP. And there may have been some confusion as to what the roles or expectations were of Council. So the addition of this wording, I think, to interpret it is simply to indicate that there needs to be an alignment with that integrated tourism strategy in a broad and focused sense. So that would be my interpretation and answer to your question.
So that's, so I guess the answer is yes and that this is a prophylactic motion. That if tourism is hived off from the current EDO function of KETCO, then this is Council indicating where they expect a new tourism Kingston office to line up. And it won't be, you know, a free-for-all. So, not that I'm suggesting they would want to do that, but they would have to follow. So that's basically what I had to say. And so I do think, in a sense, it's premature since the decision about hiving them off is not being decided and there are all kinds of really good questions about overhead and extra expenses and so on to be answered. But given that we take this as hypothetical insofar as that this first decision is not being made, and I don't know how Council feels about that. I mean, it's clear the decision hasn't been made. So I'll vote for this as long as that's the understanding. And I expect we should get a report back from KETCO about what are the costs? What are the pros and cons? Because they certainly exist.
So to your point, Counselor Hutchinson, you're right. It is potentially possible that other amendments could come forward that then could render this amendment obsolete. It's just the nature that there's no specific order by which we're going to move through this. So we're just going to have to handle that as it comes. this, so we're just going to have to handle that as it comes. But as of right now, that amendment is in order. So with that, we will call the question then on the amendment as put forward by Counselor Please vote. Still one person to vote, there we go. And that carries. Counselor Shell, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. This is more of a housekeeping, it's the very last item, number four, under Communication and Public Engagement, came up at the Kingston Accommodation Partners AGM meeting, when again Tourism Kingston seemed to be, had created a new brand, Fresh Made Daily, and this is just at the very end of number four, but maintained Tourism Kingston branding, which was redeveloped recently by Kingston Accommodation Partners and adopted by Tourism Kingston. And it's just to acknowledge Kingston Accommodation Partners put all the money into it, they're the ones that did all the work. So yes, KEDCO Tourism is using it now, but I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that Kingston Accommodation Partners did the actual work, put the actual money into it. So that's the intent of that motion. Thank you.
Okay, so that has been moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by myself. Is there anybody who wishes to speak to it? Seeing now we will call the vote. And that carries. Counselor Shell? Okay, Counselor McLaren.
Thank you. And this is, I hope, I beg your indulgence, it's a little bit of housekeeping as well, but there's also a part of it that is substantive. And I'd like to move an amendment that, and it's number two, Mr. Clerk, that reads as follows, that under the heading of Economic Development Objectives and Directions, in order to clarify the second recommendation which reads, "Map the, map the economic development ecosystem and prioritize its activities where it can bring the greatest value," be amended to read, "map the economic development ecosystem and prioritize the EDOs activities where the EDOs can bring the greatest economic value to the largest number of people in our community." And the first two, the replacing it and its with EDOs makes it clear that that's what we're talking about as opposed to map, which is just a grammatical kind of thing. But the more substantive thing that I would like to talk about here is the ethics behind economic development. It strikes me that if things are getting worse for a majority of people, then economic development is, is not really working out. If we have to work harder to get to the same place that our parents were, then something is wrong with our economic development. On the other hand, if we can actually find affordable housing, if we can find healthy food, if we can work for a living wage and/or higher, and we are becoming better economically, better off economically, then that would be an indicator that economic development is working for the whole community. And so the purpose of putting in that last clause there, or the last few sentences there, to procure the greatest benefit for the largest number of people, is to recognize that there is some kinds of economic development that we don't want. Just recently, we had a referendum saying that we don't want a casino here. There are, of course, economic benefits to that, but I believe that most of the community felt that the economic benefits would occur to a very select group, perhaps the lottery gaming facility, and not to the community as a whole. And by putting that in there, we put an ethical spin on decisions made at every level. The hope is that in fact, the whole community can benefit from economic development, not just a privileged elite, and that everyone becomes better off, because this should be a test, and this should be something that people think about when they're making economic decisions and prioritizing where to put resources. If it doesn't benefit everyone, then it might not be as high a priority as if it were to benefit everyone. And that's the substantive issue that I'd like to bring forward in this amendment.
Thank you. So there's a motion to amend that's been put forward by Counselor McLaren, is there a seconder? Counselor O'Sannick has seconded. Is there anybody that wishes to speak to the amendment? Deputy Mayor Neal.
Yes, I, I appreciate the intent of this, and I think I'll probably vote for it. I guess I'm just a little troubled by who decides what is socially acceptable and explicit ethical foundation. I think there's 13 people around the horseshoe, and we might have eight or nine different definitions of those things. However, the intent of this amendment is to reflect community values and to benefit a large, larger proportion of the community, which I do support. I'm just a little troubled by the wording, but...
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I will, and I recognize you.
Thank you. So I, I'm going to echo the concern of what was just raised. While I appreciate the intent, I don't think that there is a way you can design something that is very abstract that would exclude certain things we don't want when we don't even know what those things are. The nice thing about the casino debate is that we knew what it was, we had a very fulsome debate as a community, we had a great debate as council, and we made a decision. I think that the framework that we had worked out just fine. But here, we're trying to make, have a debate about things we don't even know what we're talking about yet. And when you're talking the abstract, you just don't know what the costs and benefits are. As the deputy mayor has pointed out, who is qualified, who will speak and evaluate what those things are? That is just something that I think is unreasonable to task any agents, regardless of whether we go with an RFP or an arms-length organization, to task or to put that, I think is just going to scare people off. It's just way too abstract. So while I appreciate the intent, unfortunately for those reasons, I can't, can't support it.
Thank you, and I return the chair.
Thank you. Next on my list is Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Like the deputy mayor, the words, I don't want to get into wordsmithing, but I, I totally am in line with the intent of this. I think what we've been hearing is that there's a disconnection from our economic development practices in the community. And, and what we're trying to do through this process today, and what, what happens after that, is reconnect the process of economic development to the community, to the community's needs and the community's values. And I think that's part of what Counselor McLaren's trying to get across here, is to put the community back in the heart of what our, our economic development strategy as a, as a, as a city and as a community is. We want to feel like we're part of it. And I think we heard that in the, in the delegations, when, when people were talking about how the business community is ready to step up and participate, when we heard that there are, we can connect people with a platform and an online system of, of pulling that community together. It doesn't have to be, economic development doesn't have to be this mystical, magical thing that takes place behind closed doors. Most of economic development work is community-building work. And, and so that's not what that says, but I think that's where it's going. And, and so that's the type of amendment that I would support, but I don't think I can support, when I, when I read that literally, I don't think I can support it going forward. But I, I do want to say that as we move through tonight, our goal should be putting the community and its values at the heart of our economic development process and structuring economic development, tourism to do that. Whatever that disconnection is, whatever caused it, we've dug into that, but I think whatever we were doing to look forward, we have to make sure we're placing the community at its heart. And that we need to tie these processes to the business community, to our citizens, and to the municipality in such a way that everyone feels connected. So I'm not going to support this, but I really appreciate the direction it's going and, and the intent of elevating our community and possibly the least affected part of our community as part of it, because I think that all of that is important.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Your Worship. I tend to agree with some of the remarks the mayor made about the broad nature of this and what the information is, but I think it's worth pointing out some of the same things that Counselor Allen and Counselor Neal pointed out. If we think we're doing economic development or anything else without a general community and ethical value system underwriting it, we'd be just misleading ourselves. That is, that sort of consideration, that kind of valuation goes on constantly in this building and out in the community all the time. And so what this, what I see this motion asking for is to make it explicit. The problem is, is that, and that is seen actually in the review, where, where the nominations of people to the review committee and the, and the recommendations of the review committee say, we must take in the interest of the wider community, it's not just a business community issue. Which, of course, business community input and participation is extremely important, but the rest of the community is funding, is footing the bill and has an interest in it. So that also is about values, ideology, and that's unavoidable. However, where I think this flounders is, is, is that it is rather abstract, it's unknown what that foundation would be, and how would we implement, how would we implement it? And so I think this is the sort of thing that would get fought out issue by issue and by activity, and for something that you can focus on and say, we don't want that. I've heard other councillors at other times say, you know, there are, there are businesses we wouldn't want, okay? And I think we, the example given at the time was, do we want an uranium processing plant, right? That would certainly give lots of people pause. So I think that these issues will always be in front of us, whether we have it spelled out, if we could even spell it out. So I don't think I'll vote for this, but like a couple of other councillors, I can certainly see where it's coming from.
Thank you. Next on my list is Counselor Bolton.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I do understand the intent of this, and I, I kind of like the intent of it, I understand where it's going into a values-based system. My problem with it is, how do you measure morals and ethics? Ethics alone, there's Socratic, deontological, just cause, consequentialism, natural law, relativism, virtue ethics. So there's so many different ethical theories and models, who gets to decide which one we use in any given moment? So with that being said, I don't know that this motion can actually truly function the way it's intended, seeing as you've got, those are just six, seven, eight of the myriad of ethical theories that are out there. So who decides what theory we use and how it's applied? So my problem with this is that it's, it's simply too broad, and as Counselor Hutchinson said, I think it's something that we're essentially going to have to do kind of on an ad hoc basis as these issues come up. So for that reason alone, understanding the intent, but realizing the complications and the just challenges that, that this could create for us in the future with basically the theories and the theoretical challenges that may come, I, I don't believe I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you to my colleagues for discussing this in very in-depth way. I think we're getting our heads around the intent. I think everybody's expressed agreement with the intent of this amendment. I'm going to focus on one aspect, first brought up by the mover, and tie it into KEDCO's history and the issue of the casino. So if you'll recall, KEDCO came out very strongly in favor of us having a casino in the city. The people of Kingston, when put to a vote, voted 67% against having a casino in Kingston. These are facts. So that's a very good example of how KEDCO did not represent the majority of the citizens of Kingston with their advocacy in favor of the casino. Now, if this amendment could avoid that, that type of, of thing happening in the future, in other words, say an offshore drilling company came and wanted to drill in the inner harbor, this is an example that Jeff mentioned to me earlier, yes, I mean, we would, we would hope that our economic development organization would have the ethical sense to say, we don't want that type of activity in our community, but we don't have that assurance. If this gave us that assurance, great. I think we, we've seen that we agree on the value-based judgment that we should all be bringing to our decision-making, and I, I'm happy to support this amendment, because I don't think it hurts anything to have this language in there. I just don't think it does actually, as probably implied by all the other speakers, I don't think it actually achieves that intent of avoiding that casino-like economic advocacy that we saw from KEDCO in the past. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McLaren, you can speak last.
Thank you. So just in answer to some of the questions that were raised, and we can't prejudge, well, that's not entirely true, we can have a pretty good sense of it, especially depending on your ethical values. And what, who would do this? The point of ethics is that everyone does this at every level. There are hundreds of thousands of decisions made yearly at any organization. If they are following a particular ethical line within the margins of, of what people can conceive at their own particular level, that is how it's supposed to work, that's how we all in fact work. And when it was mentioned that this is too broad or too high-level, well, that's where we are here, that's why we are here. This is the highest level of contemplation on particular issues that we're supposed to be dealing with. We don't get into the weeds, or we're not supposed to unless there's something wrong at the very highest level. So I'm suggesting that this is where it starts. Now, somebody had asked, what would that actually be? What is this foundation? Well, it's in the last clause, the greatest benefit for the largest number of people. This is what's called utilitarianism, and it was developed by Jeremy Bentham and John Stuart Mill as the philosophy for democratic public institutions. Prior to this, they were essentially the tools of a power elite who were trying to, you know, insulate. They got rid of slavery in the United Kingdom, it got rid of the Corn Laws, it allowed for greater mobility and equality between people, and it was actually what allowed for the greatest good things that have come out in the last 300 years to actually proliferate throughout the world. It is actually the proper theory to have for a public democratic institution like the city or one of its subsidiaries like KEDCO. That's why this particular one was chosen. There's, it doesn't mean that you have to negate any other one, there may be many other ones. They're not necessarily in conflict, but when it comes to the public, this is the one that's most important. And utilitarianism, yeah, it's for the public essentially, and it is a high level, so we should be thinking about that. And the point of doing this is also to get people to be aware of why we are here. We are here to serve the public. Sometimes that's forgotten, and sometimes it needs to be reminded by bringing it out into the forefront of our consciousness. It helps move us in the direction that is best for us. So if you do not believe that this is a big deal, then I suggest you support it. If you really think that this is going to destroy the world, then don't vote for it, but I assure you it's not. This is, this is something that will help us into the future, because we will actually avoid a lot of the confrontations that we've had before. We are, one of the things that's being recommended here is also a two-way communication group and committee. That's where it can be checked and balanced over in excesses in one way or the other. But if we don't have it explicit, then it becomes harder to get on the same page, because if we're ethically on a different page, where people are not concerned with the greatest good, well, then we might be heading indefinitely the wrong direction. And this is sort of a guideline, guideposts, like the lines on a road that sort of guide you and keep you on the right path, and you don't go into the ditch. you and keep you on the right path and you don't go into the ditch. That's what this is about, and it is high-level. Don't be afraid of talking and thinking in high-level and in abstract terms because that's what actually sets the direction and where we're supposed to be going with this. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on the amendment. And that loses by a vote of three to nine. Counsel McLaren, you still have the floor. You have four minutes left on the clock.
Thank you. May I also suggest another amendment? This is with regards to the third one under Governance, Structure and Operations. This list that was created here was put out in a list form that was given in the preference given by the public. And in light of some of the stuff that was said by our development expert, I'm suggesting that perhaps the ordering of the list is, could be made better and prioritized in such a way that we get the most bang for our buck. And to that end, if I have motion number three up there, please. It's the same thing except locked out into six letters instead of numbers because my computer didn't want to do numbers. And it's in a different order for the reason that small business and entrepreneurs are what all the experts are saying is the most important and most bang for your buck. And I would submit that that's where we should put the most effort. We're told that smokestack chasing was the way of the past and that the chances of that happening now are not impossible but very limited. When these opportunities come, we should be ready for them. That's why it's not eliminated from the list. But support for local, small businesses and entrepreneurs, these are the people that create jobs all over the world. Experts all over the world have said that and demonstrated that. This is how we grow the economy.
So Counsel McLaren, I'm just looking over your amendment, and my concern is that it's wordsmithing only because if the recommendation number three had said, "Focus on these areas in order of priority," then I think, yes, if the order specified here, if it was from most important to least important, if that's the way the recommendation was listed, then I would accept that recommendation as being substantive because we would be changing that order of priorities. But when I read this, I don't see that order there. So that in turn makes this wordsmithing to me. So unless you can convince me otherwise, I'm going to rule this out of order just because I see that as wordsmithing.
I would be willing to take that recommendation as a happy amendment or as a friendly amendment.
So you're suggesting that instead your amendment read that the prioritization of those six items be that A is the most important and F is the least important?
If that would satisfy you, yes.
So that's not, that wouldn't satisfy me because I'm not prepared at this point to say that, to make that order. That's a huge decision, and I don't believe that I'm prepared, although I would support innovation entrepreneurship, to say that investment attraction, investment aftercare are the least important. I think that that's not something that I'd be willing to support. So I can't offer that as a friendlier amendment. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to rule out your initial amendment, and if you want to put forward something that would prioritize those, you're going to have to find a seconder at that point.
Sorry, may I also have some more clarification from you on what you would prefer or what you would accept?
So I'm going to rule out this amendment because I consider that wordsmithing. If you want to put an amendment forward that explicitly prioritizes those A through F, I would accept that as a substantive amendment that I think we would then need to debate here tonight. Give me a second.
Thank you. If I were to replace the word reordering with explicitly prioritizing so as to give direction, so the third clause be amended by explicitly prioritizing so as to give direction of council priorities in the six recommended fields so that it would read da-da-da-da.
So you would need to say from most important to least important?
From most important to least important.
Is there a seconder? Counsel Allen has seconded.
Did the clerk want this?
Okay, so we now have a revised motion to amend. Can we just get that wording up on the screen, please? Does everyone understand now what we're talking about? So we now have an amendment that explicitly prioritizes these six items.
Replacing that with this explicitly prioritize from most important to least important.
Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I will, and I recognize you.
So while this is a substantive amendment, I have grave concerns with it. And I think basically what I've just said is that we have had a review report that's come and suggested that we should have an Economic Development Agency, whether that's, again, in-house or an arm's length or RFP, that should be concentrating on all of these things. And now what we're doing is we're specifically ordering those. I have grave concerns, simply because, oh, can we put that back up on the screen? So I actually should hand the chair off for this. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I will indeed, and I recognize you.
I apologize. I should have handed the chair off earlier. So when I look at that list, so D, support for Knowledge Industries, young workers, technology transfer from post-secondary institutions, and incubation, innovation, enablement. I thought we were talking tonight about how that was one of the most important things, that that was our strategic priority as council. So now we've relegated that to number four. See, this is the danger that happens when we start to prioritize those things in that way. I think that the spirit of this is that all of those are important, and then it's going to be a function of the implementation moving forward that's going to be talked about how you're going to shift resources. So for that reason, I'm not comfortable supporting the amendment, and I would urge council to vote against it. Thank you.
I return the chair.
Thank you. Next on my list is Counsel Bowman, then Counsel George.
Thank you, your worship and through you. I also have some concerns about this, and it's simply because, looking at economic development, we can pick a point in time and say, "Maybe supporting small businesses is our major concern right now." And that today, at this point in time, that should be the top of the list. But then what about tomorrow where there's another sector that starts falling down and that becomes where we need to kind of put our efforts? So in prioritizing this now, I feel that we're truly hamstringing any transitional or any change that's happening because we're basically, you know, to borrow a term from Counsel George, getting into the kitchen before we've even started the process. So for that reason, I don't think I can support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel George.
Thank you, your worship and through you. I totally agree with what Counsel Bowman was just indicated, and I didn't believe that our position this evening was to start, you know, rationalizing in our own minds what we feel should come out of a transition team, which is part of the recommendation here if we go that route, that that was, because we haven't defined even what model we want yet. So to start saying, you know, defining specifics within this, it's very premature, and I hope nobody will support this.
Counsel Turner.
Thank you, and I'd like to echo those concerns. I don't think we should be wordsmithing at this point and putting ourselves into a position that we have to make choices. And also, I think we need a fluid working document, so I'm not going to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Osinek.
Thank you, your worship. I think the confusion just came in the wording of the recommendation because it said prioritize in these six areas, and investment attraction and investment aftercare was the very top one, whereas I think it's pretty clear from the town halls that the review committee had that, you know, focusing on our existing business or local business, giving them the best help possible should be just as high a priority. So I think the confusion came there, and so what we're hearing is that the recommendation from the mover and seconder was that these are the six areas all equal. Was that true?
No. So the amendment, we still need the updated wording on the screen. I think that's the problem. So we ruled that one out of order, and then we added wording that it would say from most important to least. Oh, it does say that. I'm sorry. I apologize. So it says explicitly prioritizing from the most important to the least.
Right, but originally, like at the start of the committee of the whole, we had the recommendation. And for this recommendation, right, investment attraction and investment aftercare was the first point, right? And so I think that's where, when we read that, some of us thought, okay, that means that we're just, KEDCO is just going to be focused, number one priority on investment attraction.
So to clarify, so my interpretation, when I look at the original recommendation, is focus economic development activities in six key areas. There's no prioritization there, that all six of those are important. So thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, and I think that's where the confusion came and where this amendment then was driven from.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Oh, boy. Okay, Counsel Hutchinson.
Thank you. Just further clarification on that is part of it is on page 25 slash 300 from the last agenda. Have to put the clerk in there someplace. It says that the community prioritized these in the following way. And then it gives a different order than that for sure, but it's a different order than you find on page 5 slash 280. And so in the review document, it's, depends on what you take away from it, that causes some confusion, I think, for people about what we're actually saying here or what was actually being said. And I think it's that the community with business inputs quite clearly made business retention and expansion with existing local businesses number one by considerable margin. And I think that's part of the concern that's being expressed here. And so that we're kind of in danger of stating a priority when we don't intend to. So, and you're right, what you quoted is, doesn't say anything about priority. So anyway, my concern is that we're, that we, that number that C should be at the, if that was chosen at the public meetings and all that, we need a rationale for why it would be different. And I really didn't see it here personally. I'm told there might be an explanation there, but I wasn't told where. So I think that that's part of the impetus behind this. And so I'm wondering how we're going to deal with that. Perhaps we don't deal with it now, but at some point we're going to have to because it's a question of where you put your resources.
So to clarify, the motion that's before us is as is in the agenda. So the wording that we're looking at is what's there on the page. So it's number three, how it's read, and then this would be an amendment to that wording. So that's what we're, that's what we're going to debate. That's what we're discussing, just to bring that clarity. Counsel Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I won't be supporting this. I believe, as much as I know about economic development, I need them to be nimble and to be able to go after opportunities. If we put support for local, small business number one, and suddenly there's a huge cut in government services, local businesses are going to hurt, and there won't be a huge amount that KEDCO could do about it right then. If the dollar suddenly goes up, Canada becomes a great country again, and the dollar gets back up to a dollar, tourism will take a huge hit. And if we've already told our development company what to focus on, they can't nimbly go, "Oh, dollar's up, we got to do something else," because we've been given this list. So I want the list to stay the way it was. Six areas, we pick and choose according to the conditions, the economic conditions of the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you. Just, I supported and seconded this because, as Counsel Hutchinson pointed out, that everywhere in the review document, there's several pages, investment attraction and investment aftercare is the top of the list. Doesn't know, I don't know why it was selected there. It's not alphabetical, it's not, but it's there. But also in this document, in the recommendations, it talks about how smokestack chasing, which is sort of associated with investment attraction and aftercare, is an expensive, risky, and sort of the way of old economic development. And so then just below that, we have a different order of list than there, but a different order of what the community prioritized. And I get that we're not talking about whether or not we're wordsmithing this to be prioritized, but I do want to make sure that when we go back to economic development, we're focused on our communities, on our businesses that are already there, on supporting entrepreneurs emerging from our institutions and supporting the small businesses. I don't want us risking our dollars on things that may not pay off, even if we're good at it, and I think we are. We did land a fairly large international investment recently, but I do want to make sure that we're looking at that. And that's why I supported this amendment, because I just felt like, whether intentionally or not, we were being led to believe that investment attraction was the top activity going forward. And so that's why I supported this and brought it forward.
Thank you. Counsel McLaren, you can speak last.
Thank you. So just to clarify, that we are talking about recommendations here, right? We don't actually have a legal authority over KEDCO, so they can take this and throw it down the toilet if they want. This is, in a sense, a direction that we're giving, and it's not in stone forever. It's not like a Ten Commandments that's going to last for the next 20 years. This is where it is today. All the experts have told us that we should be focusing on entrepreneurs and small businesses. It may change, yes. That's the beauty of a two-way communication and an accountability reference that we're going to be making in here later. This isn't necessarily supposed to be Moses coming down a mountain. The idea is to give a certain level of higher direction, that we don't want trips to Paris looking for investment. We don't want to spend money in France beating the bushes looking for companies that might be coming here. We want to grow and develop our businesses here in Kingston. We need to focus with singular focus on these because that's where the most bang for the buck is. If you think that focusing on all of these six equally will benefit us to the same degree as focusing on the ones that are most likely to give us a return, I think you're in dreamland. If we are serious about benefiting the whole community, we really should focus. And when I say focus, I mean devote the greatest amount of resources to those activities that will generate the best return for the whole community. And investment attraction is at the bottom of that list. If we look at the second one, development, management and marketing for the tourism sector, this is the, this is a huge part, and it wasn't number two on the original list. Counsel Shell mentioned how important it is for her. That's why it's up at the top, not near the bottom. Business retention and expansion, this is what local businesses need to do for us to grow. And then support for Knowledge Industries, young workers, technology transfers from post-secondary institutions and incubation. This is also important, but not as important as the ones before it. There is a bang for the buck, return on investment criteria in setting it up this way. And E is E, support for workforce development, because this one is also quite problematic for me. I mean, on one hand, if we're talking about supporting workers who are already employed to get to the next higher level, we're in fact putting money into corporations where they should be doing that. And if we're talking about doing that for workers that don't have a job, what happens after they finish their program? Are we expecting them just to stick around waiting for a job? Likely, they will leave the community in search of a better job. When we put resources into that, we are risking losing them. Whereas if we let other companies or other jurisdictions do that and we attract them on their own because of our living standards and our livable city, then they're paying for our economic development. That sounds to me like a much better way of doing things. And the reason that F is F is because I really believe that that is the least likely to generate any return on its investment. This is, and it's really not meant to be, again, set in stone. This is where we are today, and it can change. It can change easily because that's what, one of the things that the report is asking for in the two-way communication is the ability to be nimble and change with new circumstances and new opportunities. is the ability to be nimble and change it with, with new circumstances and new opportunities. So I'm asking you guys, reconsider. If we want the very best, this is what it needs to be now. And I'm not telling you that this is the way it has to be next year or in 10 years from now. But this is how the experts are saying it is now, and we shouldn't discount their wisdom or their experience or their empirical data. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on the amendment. Please vote. And that loses by a vote of five to seven. Counselor McLaren, you still have the floor. You have three minutes and 15 seconds on the clock.
Thank you. Okay, one more. This is, or actually, I have several more. If I may read number six, please. That under the heading of governance structure and operations, the fifth clause be amended by adding, understanding that governance boards and committees must be large, diverse, value-based, chosen by the city's nominations committee with diversity as the primary criterion, but not necessarily the only criterion, and that a rigorous board education be ensured, to ensure new board members understand their value-based governance role and their responsibilities to the board and the community. So that it reads, number five, ensure respective boards of directors continue to maintain seats for the mayor and city council, understanding that governance boards and committees must be large, diverse, and value-based, chosen by the city's nominations committee with diversity as the primary criterion, but not necessarily the only criterion, and with a rigorous board education to ensure new board members understand their value-based governance role and their responsibilities to the board and the community.
Okay, so, so, so there's another motion to amend. So everyone can see what the new recommendation would look like. It's been moved by Counselor McLaren. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Neal. Counselor McLaren, you have the floor.
Thank you. So the rationale for this is that there is a trend to trying to get smaller boards, and specifically based on a particular class or group of people who are expertise, who have expertise in that particular field. And I submit to you that this is the wrong strategy when it comes to governance boards. Advisory committees, this is fine. But at the governance level, there is a different dynamic that is played out. When you're in a working team or a working group, it's important that everybody get along and work in towards a particular goal. But when you're on governance, the dynamic is different. We shouldn't have boards that always agree, that are always the same or subject to group think and do not argue. The point of having values-based boards as opposed to skill-based boards is that you have the widest representation from the community. And the widest representation means that you have the greatest issues debated, or the most of them debated. And this is how we, this is how we deal with the issues that are of importance to the community. If on the other hand, you have a skilled-based board at the governance level, you get an Enron, a Nortel, a WorldCom, a Baring's Bank. The thing about these particular companies is that they didn't see the big problems that they were coming to, because they all had the same education, they all had the same values, and they were all educated probably in the same place. When you have conflict and disagreement at the board level, we actually consider the best and the widest possibilities. That's what this is meant to do. When you have very small boards, cliques tend to happen. The wider, the bigger the board, the more likely it is that people actually vote based on the actual issues as opposed to ideology. And this is exactly what this is meant to do. So they must be large, diverse, value-based is the most important thing there, and chosen by the city's nominations committee, ideally because then there is no group think. Part of what happens when a board does too much interviewing and selection is that they find people that are like them. That's not necessarily what we want on a board, especially not on a governance board. And these are the main reasons for bringing this forward. Thank you.
I have a concern that this is really getting into the implementation. When we're getting into details about who and what we're looking for for board members, and specifically how they'll be chosen. So I'll allow it, but only, only because I think it's very, very close to the line. But I will ask counsel to speak only to the recommendations listed. So Deputy Mayor Neal?
I will return the chair. Thank you. And I support this, because all that it's doing, the only addition to this is the recognition, and I think that's probably what gave you pause, that the mayor and city council continues to have a place on the board of both the proposed organizations. Because when, if we're going to be spending the amount of money that both organizations may well require, which hopefully is less than what is being received today, there should be oversight by the city's representatives on council. And I think that that, that this whole process is testimony that that degree of oversight can work and in some cases is necessary. So I, I support the, the proposed amendment.
Thank you. Counselor George?
Thank you, Your Worship. I have the same concerns you do about this, but I see the clerk. Is not a lot of this already covered under our current committee bylaw? So if it's going to be a committee appointed by our city's nomination committee, I know that when we do that now, we, we specifically state what requirements we're looking for on each and every committee. So would this not also be covered off, that this is kind of a moot point?
Mr. Clerk?
To Your Worship, yes. However, these are going to be separate companies. So in a sense, we do have some oversight, but there are separate companies going forward, it appears.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I do, and I recognize you.
Thank you. So I didn't rule this out of order, but I'm afraid I am going to have to caution counsel on this. And it's particularly with diversity is the primary criterion. It's, it's a similar argument that I made to the last amendment that came forward, right? We're now starting to order in terms of preference. I'm not saying that diversity shouldn't be an issue, but the way this is wording is that diversity trumps everything. Now, we've heard from some of the delegations tonight, we've heard a lot from the community about the importance of businesspeople being on these boards. Well, that's, that's skills-based. I think it's important that whatever model we move forward, that we have people with business experience and expertise, regardless of whether we're going to RFP, or whether we're going arm's length, or whatever that looks like, even at a governance level. So again, my concern is that we're putting things in here, that this is way too early to do this. So obviously, I didn't rule it out of procedureally, but I still think it's the wrong move. So I am going to ask counsel to vote against it. Thank you. If I can have the chair back, please.
You may. And are we now in Committee of the Whole?
We are in Committee of the Whole, but we are speaking to this, we are speaking to this amendment. So right now, right now, Counselor McLaren, Counselor, Deputy Mayor Neal, Counselor George and myself have spoken to this amendment. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to this amendment? Counselor Hutchinson?
Yeah, I think I can see where this is coming from. I know I had, we made an effort back in 2007, '08 to make sure that there was a wider community representation on KEDCO, and it wasn't just a business representation. Because people bring different ideas and different outlooks and concerns. And after all, it's the community's economic development organization. Which is not, not to say that the majority of people shouldn't have business skills and experience and so on. I think that, as far as I'm concerned, that's just a given. However, I think that in a sense, it, I'm not sure it's covered by the nominations process, but I understand where Counselor George is coming from. The, I just think perhaps it's premature. And that if we have concerns about how people are going to be chosen for those, well, for the EDO with or without tourism and all the, the mayor's got it down, how you list all the possibilities, then we'll have to deal with that. And I think we'll have an opportunity to do that, because what's going to come back, I hope, is an implementation plan through the transition committee, an implementation plan that answers a lot of the detailed questions. And I think this is one of them. So I'm not going to vote for this, although I understand where it's coming from. And I would like to have some kind of ability, not for myself, but for counsel, to ensure that there's broad community's representation. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Turner?
Thank you. Just quickly, I, I understand where the motion is coming from, but I can't support it. I think I'm just a little nervous on wordsmithing what we're trying to deal with. As again, I said earlier, we need a fluid document that we can work from. And I, I like the idea that we need rigorous education for the board. I think that's a great idea moving forward. I think we should incorporate that, but I can't support this motion. I, I don't want to be pigeonholed. And I think, I think that's all, that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So Counselor McLaren, you have, oh, Counselor Stroud?
This amendment lost me on the word diversity, because it's too vague. Diversity of what? Diversity of race, religion, socioeconomic class, diversity of interest, employment, diversity of experience, age? There's, diversity just means a mixed bag, and you can't really, you can't from this, from this amendment, exactly what we mean by diversity, and it may be misinterpreted even if we pass it. Also, I'd like to say to Counselor McLaren, if you introduce any more amendments, I'm going to consider it an official filibuster.
Counselor McLaren, you have the last word.
I'm sorry, I'm going to be filibustering. Okay. The point of diversity here is, I use that word particularly because it was open-ended and fluid. Originally, I had a list of criteria, and it was pointed out to me that then I'm choosing ones. And it was also suggested at one point that perhaps we should have random requests to people in the city. All of these would create diversity. So we're not like locking it down to one particular group, or three, or four, or 10. That's part of the implementation. This is supposed to be at the high level, talk about the value that is important on the board. And a skill-based board is a dangerous one to have at a governance level because of group think, because of apathy, and because people often think very much the same way. And that is partly why we may be here. A lot of the problems that were, that us counselors may have heard at the doors were falling on deaf ears on a board that thought everything was okay. And that is what I'm trying to avoid here in the future. And I believe that this is just one of the ways of doing this. There's other ways, including the two-way communication strategy that we've recommended. But a value-based board gets ideas and experiences from such a different cultural milieu, educational milieu, age, and whatever else we can imagine, that the possibilities of group think and apathy go way down. And if we do really want the best economic development agency in the world, or in, I would prefer in the world, we need to exceed the best practices out there. And we need to empower it with the tools necessary to excel. And if we do not put diversity, which is a very important part, then we are not giving it the best opportunity from the start. And so I'm encouraging you guys to consider that it would be a stronger, more resilient, more robust, and fluid organization with greater diversity at the governance level. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on the amendment. Please vote. And that loses by a vote of two to 10. Counselor McLaren, you do have two minutes and 10 seconds on the clock. You are, you are absolutely within your rights to continue to put forward amendments. However, you may want to consider giving other people around the table a chance to speak, because you will, we will have a second round later if you wish to put those amendments forward later. I leave that to you.
I can take the hint, and I will be silent for a little while.
Thank you. So we are now back to the main motion. Counselor George?
Thank you, Your Worship. And I'm going to stand up. I'm getting a little sticky sitting here. I'm going to go back to your opening remarks and the rationale behind why we're here this evening, and that we have to give some sense of direction to staff or someone to move this ahead, to come up with a game plan, so we have some direction. We know what to do with the upcoming budget in November. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things at stake here. And I'm wondering, based on some of the comments I've heard here this evening, not only from our delegations, but from members of council that have spoken, and remarks that I've heard from members of the public over the last while, not only through emails, telephone calls, but what, what we've been reading in the newspaper and such. I'm wondering if, if I could just move right ahead to the final clause that we have in regards to that staff in cooperation with KEDCO, if it would be appropriate. I'd like to propose an amendment, if I could, Your Worship. And this is solely based on what I've heard. I've asked the clerk to put that up on the screen, but I will read it. It's moved by myself. It's seconded by Counselor Bohm, and it reads, "That city staff be directed to investigate an RFP process for the implementation of economic development in Kingston, and further, that a transition committee be formed to assist in the process, and further, that the composition of this committee be developed by city staff for consideration at our meeting of council in August." And the reason I'm, I'm-
So, so just before you speak to it, do we, do we have that on the screen?
Should have.
We're just typing it in right now?
It's on slide H.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Clerk, can I see it from? Okay, so Counselor George, I'm going to rule that out of order only because that is contrary to the recommendation that's listed before us. So the better approach would be that if you want to pursue the RFP option, you'd want to speak against the recommendation that's before us. Defeat that, and then you can bring forward a motion that would then direct staff to investigate the RFP.
Okay, so this would be the time that you would like me to speak in opposition to that clause?
So what you can do right now is you can speak to the motion that is on the floor, which is the main motion that was moved by Counselor Neal. So, yeah.
So I can speak to that and say that I really don't like the wording in it? And then we'll have to call a vote on it first before I put the amendment forward?
So then everybody else would have a chance to speak. There could be any other amendments. Eventually, we would call the vote. And then if that loses, then you would have an opportunity to put forward then a, a motion asking for an RFP.
Okay. Well, I'm going to speak in opposition to it. For first reason, I don't want to have KEDCO involved when it comes to implementing or discussing the future of this for the simple reason that I would have to say a majority of residents out there would feel that we're just putting the fox right back in the hen house. And I don't feel that we need to be put in that position. I would prefer that they stay out of it at this point in time. We, they've had their input. They have supported the recommendations that have come out in the review process. It's not that we all approve of all the recommendations. There are further recommendations we may wish to see in this. But again, tonight is not the night to really be doing that. It's been made clear in the report that to establish a transition committee that in fact could establish what model we might want to consider, that they feel is best for the economic development side of things in, in the city of Kingston. So I, I- So I personally would object to the motion as it currently reads, that staff in cooperation with KEDCO be directed to implement the aforementioned recommendations, simply because I don't agree with all the recommendations. And I feel that there are additional recommendations that could be considered if in fact we were to put in place the transition committee as is recommended in the report. So I'm hoping that council will not support the recommendation as currently written. And I guess cats are the beg, you know, what my amendment will give consideration to. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Strout.
Thank you, Your Worship. And it's nice to know that the, this amendment of Counselor George's is out there, because I would support it when, if it came up. The, just sort of back up again to what got us here and what people are saying. The people, there's a fundamental disconnect. The people have lost faith in the, in the organization. We are the oversight body for the organization. We control the purse strings. We've taken a lot of heat for the criticisms. We've been held accountable for their criticisms. And it's our job to set things right, which is the purpose of this meeting, to get to that. And I really don't see how we can get there by supporting the recommendations as they are right now, partly because of the involvement of KEDCO in that process. And part of those criticisms are absolutely legitimate. I agree with almost everything Counselor George just said. Apparently, the people of Sidneymont are speaking in a similar voice to the people of Cataracque on this one. Like Counselor Bohm and others, Counsel Cannon, Counsel McLaren, we heard about this during the campaign two years ago, before it was an issue. And nothing has happened in this whole review process that has made those criticisms that I've heard personally face-to-face at the doors of my district ring untrue, or seem not credible. And those criticisms weren't necessarily along the lines of Fox in the Hen House, as in, you know, somebody's taking from us, if you interpret it that way. It was more along the lines of ineffective. So it seems to be the opinion of the majority of my constituents that KEDCO has been ineffective recently, and something needs to be done. And they're looking to us to do that. How do you perform your oversight? How do you crack the whip, in essence, to get results? If this was the business world, and we had hired KEDCO to do a job similar to the bridge on Front Road, they'd be gone, right? Based, if it was based on the people of Kingston. And they're looking to us for this leadership. I don't think we need to throw the baby out of the bathwater necessarily. I think that the RFP process is the right way to go, and with KEDCO to participate in that competition. Because I think if KEDCO can win that competition with the RFP well-defined, using many of the recommendations from this report, if KEDCO can win that, and they ought to, because they have the advantage, if KEDCO can win that competition in open, fair competition with other organizations as suggested by the delegations, then they have justified their existence. Then the criticisms are no longer valid, and we get out of this situation, this circular situation that we're in. If we simply just approve these recommendations, as well-meaning as they were, and as productive, and as useful as many of the recommendations are, we have not performed our fundamental obligation as the oversight body. And it will probably happen again. That's the precedent we'll be setting. So I will be voting against the recommendations as they stand now, but they do form a very good basis moving forward. And I would also support Counselor George's amendment, and I hope that it comes forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Hutchison.
Point of procedure--
Point of order?
Point of order, excuse me. The, if we're voting on the whole recommendation, and it passes, seems to me the meeting's over. Right?
Agreed.
Because you've accepted the whole motion. I'm not sure I accept the whole motion. I'm not sure I want to spend council's time on, you know, messing around with particular clauses. But it seems to me that if that's what we're doing, the, that's a good reason not to do it this way. Because I think there's a lot more that people want to say. I'm not even talking for myself, okay? This is my intuition, listening to people. So that I think if you want to continue discussing certain aspects of this motion, you have, you're going to have to vote for it. But once you vote for it, you're finished. So we get, we leave. And I'm not sure that's what we want to do. And that's my concern. Because once you've accepted it, you've approved it, no more amendments. So what are we going to do here? I don't think this is the route we really want to be going. I understand where Counsel George's coming from, but perhaps this isn't the place to have this intercede. I'm looking for guidance from the clerk and yourself. What's that? Well, yeah, well, they just suggest we separate it all, what, clause by clause by clause?
Yes. Okay, so just to, just to clarify on that point of order raised by Counsel Hutchison. So if, if we vote on the motion as is before us, and it passes, then yes, we have effectively made a decision that we're going to go in the general direction that has been described by the recommendations of the report. If, on the other hand, it's voted down, then there's an opportunity for another motion to come forward. So the meeting would not end at that point. At that point, I would entertain a motion. It would be a simple motion at this point, which would essentially direct staff to explore another option, because we don't have any of the details of what that would look like, that would then require a reporting back to council at that point. Does that address your concern, Counsel Hutchison?
Well, part of my concern is I might support, many councillors might support the vast majority of this, and want to see it in any form of EDO, right? And then they would be on record as having voted against it. I don't think that's what they want. So it's more sticky then. Like, if we vote this down, then what if you said, okay, not you, but eight councillors said, well, I actually agree with 90% of this. I would like to make a 90% motion. And then we're stuck here messing with individual clauses. And I don't know about you, but I think that's not going to be a good thing. And if people want to change or amend particular ones, that's fine. But it's an ordered, coherent process, which we've been following tonight, in part because of your leadership.
So, so I appreciate that point. It is a very complex problem that we are facing tonight. So I'm trying to provide what I believe is the best guidance that I can. So my interpretation of the motion that's before us is, as a whole, these are the recommendations. We can make amendments. We can vote on them. We can approve them, or we can vote them down. If we vote them down, that does not mean that by directing an RFP or another direction, that there couldn't later be an opportunity to bring some of these recommendations built in, but it would be in a very different form than what we have here. Point of order?
What does that do? I don't, I don't want to belabor this, but frankly, we already accepted the review committee's report, right? We received it. Yeah, yeah, sorry. That's more correct. We did receive it. And then, these are just a list of things that came out of it. So we received it, which is a type of acceptance, right? And now we're going to vote against it. I just see this as a quagmire, legally, if nothing else.
So Counsel Hutchison, I would argue that that is, that's an argument not to vote against it, but it's not a procedural argument. Procedurally, it is valid to vote a motion down, and then to consider another, another motion. So I appreciate your point. I would, I would suggest that you offer that when you're actually speaking to the motion itself.
Point of order.
Deputy Mayor Neal?
I guess my concern is, we've had a couple of delegations very enthusiastic about an RFP process. I looked for examples of RFP economic development. My concern is that if we vote this down in order to consider RFP, this would need, and I'll look to the clerk for this, this would, or to the chair, this would need a two-thirds vote to bring it back. So if we defeat this, we're, we're accepting an RFP process that right now is undefined, that doesn't have--
Okay, so I'm just going to stop you there. Mr. Clerk, can I see you for a moment? Okay, so, so Deputy Mayor Neal, I'm going to, I'm going to give you a similar answer to what Counsel Hutchison raised. That is an argument for why you shouldn't vote the motion down, but it is not a procedural problem. At the end of the day, if this is, if this is voted down, council has made a decision not to proceed with the general direction of the KEDCO review report. At that point, there is, it is a blank slate, in which case council can choose to take a different path. And then I would entertain a motion to examine what that path is.
Could you explain why, as we normally do when there are a whole series of recommendations, we're not able to separate--
We can separate.
We can separate them?
We can separate. Yep, separations are fine.
I would suggest that we separate them in the end, and--
That's fine.
--and cherry pick.
Okay, so Counsel, okay. Counsel Hutchison, so you raised a point of order, but you did have the floor. Is there anything else you would like to say at this first round?
Okay, I think that, I think that I called separate, separate this. Just was going to talk to Counsel George. I think his motion belongs under only the second part of governance structure and operations. At least it's arguable that it would go there. And then we don't throw out the baby with, all the babies that are in front of us with the bathwater. That's, that's my main concern. Because whoever gets this, whether, whatever form the EDO takes, it's quite clear the council, and the community, and lots of businesses think, no, no, there's got to be a structure here. So it's inclusive, and it's transparent, and all these other values that we're not willing to give up. So I'm not willing to vote against all of that, just to get to that particular one, however important it might turn out to be.
So I will entertain separations. If anyone wants, when we get to the vote, if anyone would like any of the recommendations separated, then we can call--
So I would just say that I'm willing to vote for the vast majority of this, even in cases where I have difficulties, like the separation of tourism, okay? Because I said before that I haven't seen an argument that explains to me how we're going to deal with the overhead problem, where we're not just increasing our, our costs. And also maintaining the coherence of how those two basic functions, EDO and tourism, would fit together. Now, we were suggested by KEDCO board member that it can be done by putting people from, say, if its name is Tourism Kingston, on the board of the EDO. Maybe that works. But nobody's worked that out. And we're not voting on that tonight. So this is why in general, I think it should go to KEDCO, give us an implementation, and the city, city staff, that's part of it, give us a implementation plan that incorporates these, these clauses, these principles, these values. Until we have something really much more concrete, we really don't know what we're voting on. I would just ask people to step back from that and think about that. And so then, so that's why I'm going to vote for the vast majority of it, once it's separated. And, you know, I'll consider the RFP aspect when I see the context that falls in. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I will, and I recognize you.
Thank you. This is, this is a very complex issue that we're grappling with tonight. So I appreciate everyone's patience in working through some of these procedural questions. There's a couple of comments that I'd like to say, first off. First of all, I appreciate the comments of the delegations tonight, and the discussion around the table, that is very much centered on what is the best way forward. That, in my view, is absolutely the key question here tonight. I have consulted with many stakeholders across the community over the last couple of weeks, spoken with downtown Kingston BIA, Kingston Accommodation Partners, the Chamber of Commerce, Innovate Kingston, Imagine Kingston, Queen's University, St. Lawrence College, commercial realtors, so many different stakeholders in economic development. And they have all told me the same thing. It's time to move forward. No more looking back about what might have gone wrong. It's important to find what is the right path to move forward. Let's move forward together. And I appreciate even that Friends of Kingston came with that message tonight as well. It seems to be one point that we can all agree on is that we need to move forward. Now, the question is, how best do we move forward? And what we're grappling with is that there are several fundamental models by which you can do economic development and tourism. On the one side, you can bring it right into City Hall and make it a department of the city. At the extreme other end, you can outsource it. So you can put it out to RFP, you can make it open, you can put it out and see who would respond to it. And then somewhere in the middle, you can have this arms-length organization that effectively has a little bit, it's more of like a hybrid, and ideally has some elements of both. Now, that's what we've had in the past. I don't think there's anyone around this table that would agree that for a variety of reasons, we're not satisfied with the status quo. I don't think anyone here is arguing for status quo. But just because you need change, you have to be careful that you select the right type of change. Because sometimes you can blindly, out of wanting change, you can go for the wrong type of change without understanding all of the implications that are attached to that. Let me give you an example. Right now, in the province of Ontario, every municipality either has economic development in-house, or they have it as an arms-length organization. Now, one of the reasons that was thrown out earlier tonight, one of the reasons why that might be the case, is because there is provincial funding that comes through economic development, for example, to support small businesses. And there are strings attached to that money. So taking a model that's used in the US, without understanding what would that mean for our funding, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars to support small businesses in Kingston, I'm very concerned about taking a blind leap in a different direction without understanding what those implications might look like. The vast majority of the stakeholders that I have spoken with have said, it's a trade-off between an arms-length or moving it into City Hall. That's what I've heard. I know we're talking about the RFP tonight, but the stakeholders that I'm talking about is saying that that's the trade-off that fits within the province of Ontario, that that's really the trade-off that we want to find. And the reason why I'm intrigued by the model that's put forward by the review committee is that it's new. It's a, what I would consider to be a fresh, potential best practice that's just been adopted by London and Peterborough, and a couple of other municipalities that have gone through this same process. And the reason why they say that is that it's bringing it closer to City Hall, so we have more control, but at the same time preserving a little bit of arms-length, which again, has advantages as well. So I'm intrigued to try this best practice for a couple of reasons. First of all, I like the idea of having more control. I don't think that the problem is that our Economic Development Agency has been too close. It's been that it's been too far away. And an RFP risks putting it further away. Because when you do an RFP, it's going to be out there for a period of time. You lack control until the RFP comes up for renewal. I think we need to move in the opposite direction. I think we need to have more control, more input, and more alignment with where we're going as a city. So I actually like the idea of pulling it in closer. I think that we need to be careful about the implications of other models without understanding exactly what they are. Now, the other big thing, of course, that we're talking about tonight is separating economic development from tourism. Of all the stakeholders that I have consulted, it's unanimous. Everyone thinks that's a good idea. And you know why? It's more transparent. I mean, the debate over KEDCO last year, I've heard concerns about transparency. You know what? This is just simply more transparent. It's easier for-- It's easier for people to understand what are the dollars that go towards tourism and what are the dollars that go towards economic development. So for that reason, I'm in favor of the separation. But I'm also in favor of this service-level agreement model, which is different than the status quo. That's not what we have right now. It's different, and it's an intermediate step. If people around this table wanna consider an RFP, this would be my recommendation. Adopt this, and then we've already got the service-level agreement all mapped out, and then it's very packaged at that point. We can immediately put it to RFP in two or three years if we're not happy with the results we get. We could even use that as a consideration that we wanna see some results, or else then we'll put it out to RFP. So I think that that's a much better, more practical, more refined option where we'll then understand exactly what the RFP would bring. So for that reason, I am supportive in general of the recommendations that are before us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I return the chair.
Thank you. Next on my list is Counselor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I seconded this motion because I think the conversation needed to happen just simply because it had been brought up so many times. I see quite a few concerns, though, with jumping exactly to that. And some of them are how would... and we seem to be focused on KECO as it exists now. We know that that's... they've already started to transition. We know that whatever it is, whether it's, you know, the New Economic Development Corporation or whatever entity that takes, I'm curious how they would even attempt to apply for an RFP, seeing as they're funded through us, which means essentially they'd be using taxpayer-funded money to apply for an RFP through the city that if they win, then they had an advantage, and if they lose, then they'd be seen to have wasted taxpayers' money either way. So there's a whole lot of layers there that would need to be worked out, seeing as they don't really have their own funding. So that's one of my concerns with jumping right into that, that I don't know if has really even been considered. And then we could also end up with the fact that if they're the only ones that apply and they win, then what's really happened? The same problems are gonna exist. The same problems are gonna be there, and it's gonna be seen as just, you know, literally, we went through an RFP process to end up with the same result. Whether they're there or not, the perception could still be the same. Essentially, with a measured approach, which we could end up in an RFP process three, four, or five years down the road, but with a measured approach, as the mayor mentioned, what we're doing really is we're taking them from arms-length and bringing them into elbow length. We're gonna have more oversight. We're gonna have greater controls. We're gonna have that transparency, accountability, and basically the fundamental openness that the community has been demanding. By setting up these SLAs, we're essentially taking a step in that direction. So we are positioning ourselves that we can actually move that way if and when it's required. But I think that we're literally skipping a step. If we go directly to RFP, that's because we're gonna be losing some provincial funding for small businesses and access to some of the other funding that currently exists with no idea of what's gonna replace that funding. So even if there are some cost benefits, we're literally giving up funding that's already in place to maybe realize those cost benefits. So risk versus benefits analysis would say that we needed a lot more information to take that leap. So I think a lot of the concern here is we're still focusing on KECO as it existed, and I don't believe that come tomorrow that it's gonna exist in that entity anymore. So I think part of that is, what was mentioned earlier, is we really have to look at the fact that change is hard. It's never easy. We're probably never gonna get it right on the first try, but this is an ongoing process. No solution's gonna be perfect, but we can keep working this forward. So essentially, we're gonna need a collaborative approach. Taking it with this new model, which has already been implemented in a few spots, is a step, and it's an incremental step rather than a knee-jerk reaction of just bringing it in-house or abolishing it completely. So we're taking that measured approach with the best information available in the hopes that we are driving economic development in the right direction and that a year from now, we can all look back and say, hey, we did the right thing. And if we didn't, then we still have the ability to make those changes down the road, and we've positioned ourselves strategically to be able to make them easier then. But at least we know that we took that measured approach to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has not spoken to the main motion that wishes to speak in the first round?
Sorry, point of personal privilege. Are we still discussing Counselor George's amendment?
So that's a point of order, and the answer is no. So we are speaking to the main motion. So Counselor George's, it would not be an amendment. It would be a separate motion that could come forward if this motion is defeated.
Thank you. It was up on the screen, and Counselor Bohm was basically speaking to the amendment. So I just wanted to clarify that.
So perhaps we could take that down just for clarity. So right now, on the first round of the main motion, Deputy Mayor Neal, Counselor Candon, Counselor Shale, Counselor McLaren, Counselor George, Counselor Stroud, myself, and Counselor Bohm have all spoken. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in the first round? Counselor Allen.
Thank you, your worship. I will attempt not to filibuster my five minutes here. I think just what we're talking about here and what you and Counselor Bohm have both mentioned is talking about having more control and more oversight. One of the big challenges is the community's shock that we don't know what the activities of KECO is as council. One of the... which is why I put myself up for nomination to the KECO board so I could understand what was going on there, so I could participate in what was happening. And even my experience was very different than Counselor McLaren's experience. The board I was on was responding to the conditions out there and making things, and they've, you know, in their communication to us, they've talked about some of those things in terms of response. I'm not saying that the organization as it exists is what we want for KECO, but I do wanna say that there are good people who think about good things and are listening involved. But even to council, my participation, Counselor Hutchison's participation, the mayor's participation, that information or those conversations never came back to the rest of council. So there's a systemic issue just with us in general, probably with all of our boards, not just KECO, where we don't necessarily report back what we're doing at the Board of Health, what we're doing at KECO, what we're doing at the CRCA in a convenient way. That's not what we're dealing with tonight, so I'm gonna stop talking about that. But there is a systemic issue there that we need to address one day. I like the service-level agreement, and the service-level agreement establishes some ways that we can have a conversation with KECO, both as a council and as a community. And one of my big criticisms of KECO when all of this sort of came to light and the review committee was struck was communication, integration, collaboration. It seems that there's a disconnect between the organization, regardless of how talented or who is there, and council and the community. And we need to take action and create pathways for that communication and that. And so that's why I really am very supportive of the service-level agreement, some of the changes to the governance and oversight and performance management. I... Okay, I have an amendment to the governance structure and operations, and it's an additional clause. So I'm not changing a clause, I'm adding something. And the idea here is that we have a successful set of oversight where council sits at the top of several of the arms-length organizations that we work with. Utilities Kingston, we're a shareholder for. Town Homes Kingston, we make up the membership of Town Homes Kingston. We... With KECO, we're seen as providing that oversight, but we actually aren't. We actually... Our relationship is, this organization exists, and we give you money to do this activity. The service-level agreement ties it in, but perhaps, you know, the community would appreciate if we had more actual oversight in the organization. And so in my amendment, as it comes up there, and there was some scribbles, so hopefully they get it typed out all right, I'm basically suggesting that we ask the Board of Directors... I wrote KECO, and then I wrote Economic Development. The Board of Directors of the Economic Development Agency, whether it's currently KECO or whatever comes forward, set council as its key membership. So if it's a not-for-profit, as it likely will be, it can have members. That membership selects or provides oversight to the Board of Directors. So we can still have all the structure that we're talking about in terms of boards and advisory boards, but we're structuring the organization in such a way that council is at the top of it, where the community expects us to be.
Thirty seconds.
So if that amendment can come up, I'll stop talking. But essentially, I can also just read it aloud if it's not...
Do we have that?
There we go. So that... And I've said it for both organizations because currently, that's what we've got here. So that the Board of Directors for both organizations amend their corporate structure to place city council as the membership of each organization. I think that's fairly clear.
So I'll just stop. So we have a motion to amend. It's been seconded by Counselor Bohm. Counselor Allen, you've spoken to it, but you essentially have the floor if you wish to speak to it any further.
So I introduced it, so I'll give the floor up to hear what council thinks about this approach. And it's something that I was just thinking about in terms of giving the community what they expect.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Neal.
Yes, I support the intent of this motion. We spoke briefly before about whether we could do a similar thing through, as we are with Utilities Kingston, the shareholders, and therefore you have a couple of shareholder meetings a year where there is a full accounting that can be sought. But... And I'll look to our CAO, but as a membership, just as we are with other membership organizations, there would be annual reports and an opportunity in more fulsome discussion to be able to ask questions than might normally happen just in a budget briefing. Is that accurate, looking to the CAO?
CEO Hunt.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There are structures that can accommodate that. Obviously, a shareholder structure, which is in place, or a membership structure, which is in place with our Town Homes Kingston organization. At this point in time, we haven't researched that in terms of the elements that would need to occur as a result of the Business Corporations Act for which these things are structured. But if this was something that needs to be considered as part of that oversight, we could certainly analyze that and assess it.
I think it's a good amendment, and I'll support it.
Thank you. Counselor Stroud.
Yes, and I like the idea, and I think from the purposes of oversight and governance, it might work very well. However, I'm wondering about the aspect of the nonprofit and how it interacts with the RFP idea, because I'd like to have all options on the table if possible. So I'd like to ask a question again. I guess to anyone in staff, are nonprofits able to bid in an RFP process? Or would that be off the table if we adopt this?
So that's a valid question when we get to the main motion.
Well, it's valid for me. I don't know if I can support the motion if it scuttles the RFP idea.
Okay. So I guess the question would be...
Well, the question really is if we adopt this amendment, does that preclude any attempt at an RFP process for procurement of the EDO? Maybe no one knows the answer, but...
CEO Hunt.
So what we're talking about here is the elements of a corporate structure and oversight, whether it be membership or shareholder. And so the decision of moving forward with an RFP for the purposes of services would not be impacted, in our view at this stage, by that particular amendment, because that would basically take it down a different process for which maybe an organization might apply through the RFP process. But the process is independent of the structure of a particular organization. At the end of the day, if council at some point in time chose to deliver, say, economic development services through an RFP process, and that organization was not successful to that degree, then the organization would have to decide whether or not it continued to exist. So, you know, it's not a... It's very much independent in my mind in terms of the corporate structure versus the introduction of some elements of an RFP process.
Okay, well, with that, I will take that as face value. So there are two independent questions. Therefore, they're not incompatible. I still don't really understand why the RFP idea is incompatible with the motion as it stands. But if it's not incompatible with this, then I will support this motion, this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
...about it, and it also speaks to kind of the expectation from the public. And a lot of the concerns that were raised, a lot of people out there already perceive it as being set this way. So when you start giving them, well, we don't know that. Well, why not? Well, because it's its own corporation, and there's the Corporations Act. And you start getting into all these explanations, you can kind of see people's eyes glaze over because at that point, they don't really care about what the reasons are that you don't know something. They just sort of expect an answer. So with this idea, I'd like to sort of see it explored because it could sort of, in my mind, help to bridge that gap where there's the perception of how it should be, and then there's kind of the way it was. So with the new recommendations and everything, if they're not mutually exclusive and they can function under this model, then I think it's something that should definitely be explored and considered. Thanks.
Thank you. CEO Hunt.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to suggest to council that, you know, if they're gonna entertain this particular motion, they might wanna change the wording a little bit so that we had, you know, staff or people that are trying to assess this had the opportunity to consider it, because it may actually be restricted under the relationship of either the Municipal Act or the Business Corporations Act in terms of doing this. So by having a direct... giving a particular direction of that sort that doesn't have any ability to consider whether or not it's even doable would be something that could impair us from advancing in the direction on an expedient basis.
Thank you. Counselor Allen, would you consider amending the wording to that the Board of Directors for both organizations consider amending their corporate structure?
Will that work for staff? Would you be... or that consideration be given that both organizations amend their corporation corporate structure? Maybe instead? Does that make sense?
The consideration be given?
Yeah.
So if we can add those... Mr. Clerk, do we need an amendment? So we'll take that as friendly, if that's acceptable to Counselor Bohm?
Okay. Okay, we'll go with that. Nobody's shaking their head at me or waving their fist, so I think we're okay.
All right, point of order. Those words change my opinion of the motion, so they can't be considered friendly.
So that's fine. But you're not a mover or a seconder.
I've already spoken out in favor of the motion, and now I'm against it. So what does that mean?
I'm okay with having an amendment to the amendment. He's got it written, so...
If it's not binding, the amendment doesn't mean what it says.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, can I see one? So Counselor Stroud, our procedural rules dictate that for an amendment to be friendly, we only need the mover and the seconder to agree to it. That doesn't necessarily impinge on your ability to change your vote, you're more than welcome to do that. So is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counselor Hudson?
Want to make the point, I'm in favor of what's being proposed. I think it's, as long as we're willing to accept the more direct responsibility that will come with it, I think, and I thought Counselor Bohm's got comments where both on-spot and amusing, in the best sense of word. So, yeah, the eye-glazing thing is certainly something we deal with. So, but I just want to be sure about this. If we, this, if we talk about both organizations in the context of what else is here, we're accepting the second part of the governance structure and operations thing that we separate Tourism Kingston. And frankly, I've changed my mind in the middle of this meeting, I thought the mayor spoke excellently to that. So, but I just want to point it out that this is all a piece, because one of these organizations doesn't exist at the moment.
So one of the things that happens with a motion to amend is that you can amend the motion, but the motion can then be defeated. So it's entirely possible that this could all be moot. So just so everyone understands that, that's just the procedural process that we're working through here. So it's entirely possible at the end of the day, all the amendments we've discussed are going to be thrown out the window, but that we have to deal with them one at a time, just, so we have to understand that at the end of the day, different things could happen.
No, I understand that, I was just getting it out on the floor, that that's an implication of passing this. And if everybody's all right with it, great, as long as it's clear and out there, I'm fine. And I support this. Thank you. Depending on what the staff come back and tell us, of course.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment? Counselor George?
Well, it seems to me that it's still, and I know this is all recommendation, whatever, but to give consideration, they could just say, go fly a kite. We don't want city council as a membership of this organization, so I can't support that. I mean, if it said something in regards to the Board of Directors amend their corporate structure to place city council as the membership of each organization, should legislation allow or something like that, but to just give consideration, they could say, nope, and we're no better off. I think something has to be changed, I can't vote for it the way it's worded now.
Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I do, and I recognize you.
So I think it's important to recognize that there are a whole bunch of recommendations that are before us that will require the new E D O and the new tourism organization, if they're separated, to cooperate with city council and with city staff. Implicitly, what we're saying here is, we're asking for consideration, and if you don't consider it, then you may not get your funding. But that's really, at the end of the day, that's the card that we have to play here. The only reason why we're using the word "consider" is to leave open the door that there might be a legal reason why we can't do that. So if the boards of the new organizations reported back to city council and saying, we've considered your request, the reason why we've said no is because of this legal reason, this, that legal reason, then we would have an answer. If they said no because we don't want to, then council could say, well, fine, you're not getting any money. So in my view, I think it's fine to approve this recommendation, I think it's not in any way suggesting that we need the permission of these new organizations to do what it is that we want. So I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Turner?
Thank you, and through you. I'm a little concerned about this motion, and I'm just concerned for the legality of it, and I'd like to ask for legal opinion, please.
So I think staff have said that they're not in a position to definitively answer that, which is why we changed the wording to "consider."
But will it be okay if we just leave consideration, and there'll be no ramifications or any municipal issues with this going forward? Because I just don't feel comfortable supporting it.
Can I get Ms. Nicholson?
Through you, your worship. The word "consider" does give the option to be explored, and that would include a consideration of all the legal aspects that would have to be reviewed for such a determination. So I think the word is inclusive enough to include that scope.
Okay, thank you. But I do understand your intention, though, and I respect that. Thanks.
Counselor Cannon?
Thank you, and through you. I guess, from my end, I see the entire report as a consideration. The Economic Development Office that we're sending to it can do everything or nothing, and as the mayor said, we have the discretion at that point as to whether or not we want to continue on. So I feel like the report itself is nothing more than a report and recommendations, just the same as this. So I agree the wording is a little bit light, but when you look at what it's, what we're recommending in the entire report, nothing is absolutely written in stone, and then we have to make decisions ongoing as to whether or not we want to, whether or not we're happy with the changes that we saw, given the recommendations that we made. So I'm happy to support it. I think that it's a way of bringing this organization closer to the city at times. I had even considered bringing it right, the entire organization right into the city. The committee didn't think that was the best way to go, but I think that this is a nice compromise in allowing us to have greater control over an organization that we spend a lot of money on. So I'm happy to support it, and the very nature of the entire report is a recommendation, and then what gets implemented or doesn't get implemented will determine how we make decisions ongoing as a council. So I'm happy to support the recommendation.
Thank you. Counselor Allen, you have the last word.
Thank you, and I'm sorry to have thrown a few counselors for a loop with the word "consideration." My original writing actually had "consideration" because I didn't have the legal answer yet, and so I wanted to make sure that, but I also wanted to make sure that it was clear when I brought it forth. So I removed "consider" because I figured somebody would bring it up. And so I wanted to make sure that I was clear that we want to provide that oversight that our community expects in a model that we already successfully do this in. And I think that with strong leadership in these organizations, the need for that membership or shareholder structure will be mostly communication, but it allows us to work with the organization if we need to make a drastic change as a council, if it's legal, I don't know yet. So that's why we need to look at that, because it has taken some time, and I unfortunately only really alerted staff to it yesterday. So we're coming there and we're looking at it to strengthen our relationship, and it's just like why I started talking about the S L A in terms of this. So I understand where Counselor George and Counselor Stroud feel that we've weakened our argument here, but I don't, I think we just have to make sure that as we go forward, that this is something that's an important part of the package. And if we, the trick of being on council sometimes is if we're demanding something that we can't do, we're going to find ourselves, you know, eating our own words and eating our own actions and feeling like fools. And so I'd like to investigate whether or not this is possible, and just help along that governance. And I don't think that the, if it's, if everything's functioning, we don't need to intervene from that structure, we don't need to do anything from that structure, but what it does do is give us responsibility, and that may be where the challenge is legally. There could be activities that the E D O engages in that, in terms of negotiation or something, that may expose us, but I don't know what that looks like, so that's why we need to consider. So I'm okay with the consideration, but I feel strongly about this. And if the consideration comes back, no, you can't. If it's anything but legal, I'm going to probably follow the mayor's advice on this. So that's the way I look at it. So I appreciate everyone's comments and concerns on this idea. I hope it just leads to more discussion and helps provide that oversight that everyone keeps asking for. Thanks.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on the amendment. And that carries by a vote of nine to three. So Counselor Allen, you were at five minutes, so I will look to, there are two counselors that have not spoken in the first round. Counselor Osannick?
Thank you, your worship. So speaking to motion number two, as we have it standing now with the amendments that we've had, I do support all of the recommendations, so that's how I'll be voting. At those town halls, we heard so much about metrics, measure, 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 we need to collect the metrics, have a scorecard, that's what the service level agreement will allow us to build and to do with this new E D O. I never want to hear again that there's been a business in Kingston that's knocked on the E D O door and was just given a brochure. We have to be proactive, getting, you know, helping the businesses, the local businesses out there, following up with every call. We have the Salesforce software, and it's got to be used, and that can, again, help build all those categories in the scorecard. We heard tonight how important it is for networking, so those were great ideas that KEDCO, you know, will take away angel investors. We heard that months ago, that Kingston's one of the few communities our size that doesn't have any angel investors, and, you know, that should be something, too. I know that's in the implementation of where we're not going to go right now tonight, but we also saw the presentation on the platform, you know, so using new technology in those ways, and I think these recommendations will help us get there. We also heard at the town halls about how we have to build the trust of our E D O with the community again, and I think the best way to do that is through the R F P process, because then it is a competition, and the best company will win, and it takes everything away from, you know, negativity with our existing E D O. But the problem with that is that there's just too many risks, and the biggest risk is losing our ministry funding. The funding provided right now by the new ministry name, Ministry of Economic Development by the province, that will have a bad effect on our small business unit at KEDCO, because that's where the majority of that funding comes from, and that's a huge risk. What are we going to do, not really support small business? We know that's what we have to do, is support small business. So if we don't get the ministry funding, it means funding it from the taxpayer, and, you know, already we're looking at how we can reduce what we're giving every year in budget to KEDCO. And we also have other risks, too, of if KEDCO doesn't continue on, right, then we have no knowledge transfer. You know, we'll have a deadline, we do the R F P, a new company, right, new nonprofit, you know, takes over, say, January 1st, December 31st, the current KEDCO staff, there they go. There's no knowledge transfer. Every, well, anyone who's in, you know, an organization right now knows how important it is for knowledge transfer succession planning, you know, when the president retires, when senior managers retire, you have to have knowledge transfer. And with a brand-new corporation that will take over, if KEDCO, for instance, didn't win the R F P, there'd be none of that knowledge transfer. And also, too, is doing the R F P process. We asked our consultant on June 21st, when he presented, what other cities in Ontario are using the R F P process, and we were told that it was Muskoka and Sussex, New Brunswick, and both of those townships have a population of less than 10,000. So for me, that's just a huge risk to try to follow a model with a city that our size when our comparator cities across the province are not doing so. So that is why I support these recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to speak? You can speak in the second round if you want. Okay, so we're now moving to the second round. I already have Deputy Mayor Neal listed, you have the floor. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you very much. I will try to be brief, which is always a challenge, I know. First of all, and possibly Counselor George is the only one with the, speaking of corporate memory, there used to be an organization called K D A C. It was Kingston and Area Economic Development Corporation. So it served pre-amalgamation, it served the amalgamated area plus Bath, I believe. The reality was, there were some criticisms at the time about, and this is ironic, about transparency and accountability, and there were issues that the community had, and the business community in particular, had questions about that process. So we established a new organization called KEDCO, and they were established with the intent that there would be greater transparency and greater accountability. I would suggest that over the first decade of their operation, there was mission slip, and there was a kind of frustrations as far as accountability. I wasn't the only counselor in the previous council to kind of question where the information was. I think I pointed out in the 2015 budget, that was our first budget after the election, that you could have written the, their budget on the back of a napkin, what we got presented at the budget period. And we all heard those kinds of complaints at the doors when we were knocking. So clearly, we need to do better, both as the oversight body, but also whoever our economic development organization is going to be. I would suggest, as I mentioned earlier, that KEDCO, for a number of reasons, is a bit of a toxic brand, and however we go forward, and it's not our job tonight to decide on a name, but however we go forward, I think we need a true reorganization, not just rebranding by changing the name and the letterhead, but actually changing the organization. And for that reason, I'm going to ask staff, establish a transition committee to be responsible for oversight and direction over the restructuring process. Will that be something that the makeup of that committee or the selection of that committee indeed will be a council prerogative? My concern is that it should be a non-KEDCO experts from the community, so people from the Queen's Business School, people from the business community that make up that transition committee. And clearly, for the reasons that Counselor Osannick mentioned, there has to be some kind of passing on of the torch. So clearly, there would need to be some KEDCO involvement in answering questions as far as defining that. But would that transition committee, could that transition committee, in fact, be a non-KEDCO organization? And I look to the C A O for that.
C A O Hunt?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, so I think, and I speak, I guess, starting on behalf of being a member of the review committee, I think there's no question that, you know, people understand that there needs to be a different branding, and perhaps, as you suggest, a reculturalization of the approach. I can't speak specifically to the transition committee necessarily because that needs to sort of unfold, based on your direction here this evening, but I can tell you that certainly the people that will be charged with implementing these recommendations should council direct staff be involved, and that will be definitely looking to redevelop that culture and that rebranding so that it does have a new flavor, if you will, based on the input from, and recommendations from the review committee report. But I, you know, in fairness, I think I have to wait until council gives me direction as to what it is you expect city staff to do in that regard.
Thank you, and I'm glad you brought up, mentioned the whole concept of culture, because I think that's where the trust gap is with the community, is that we have seen some cultural shift with a more detailed budget coming to council at budget with a more detailed budget coming to council at budget time.
30 seconds.
And, thank you, and an agreement that KEDCO would abide by the provincial sunshine list. Those are good things, but their refusal to totally open their books when that was being requested by the advisory committee suggests that there's been a step towards a new culture, but perhaps not a big enough step yet. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McLaren.
Thank you. When I last stopped speaking, there were three more amendments. Now there's only two. So thank you, Counselor Allen. And this is related to the attribution problem. One of the things that accountability presents us with as a problem is, how much can we attribute to a particular action of the corporation? And sometimes it's very easy, often, and more often than not, actually, it's very difficult to attribute to a particular action of the corporation. And so I am going to make a recommendation, and it's number nine.
So this is a motion to amend? Is that right, Counsel McLaren? Okay, can we just put that up on the screen, please?
Shall I read it?
So the motion to amend says that, under the heading Transparency and Accountability, a fifth clause be added that reads, "To overcome the attribution problem, establish an independent and public attribution committee to spot-check and judge the reasonableness and reliability of the numbers claimed in any performance measurement of any future EDOs." So that's a motion to amend. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counsel Neal. Counsel McLaren, you have the floor.
Thank you. So the attribution problem is the problem here. Oftentimes, if you do a particular action, you may not be given due credit. And if I may do a football example, if the quarterback passes correctly to the receiver, and the receiver crosses the finish line, or the end zone, who gets the actual credit? Usually, it's quite clear, but sometimes it's not. And the point here is that, one of the complaints that I heard is that KEDCO picks its numbers, or gives its numbers, and they have verified them themselves. It seems shady, in a sense, to some people, because there seems to be a lack of accountability. So the proposal here is that a random group of people, citizens, residents, consider how they got their numbers. And from a reasonable point of view of the community, is it reasonable? And they can recommend they're 60% reasonable, or maybe they're undervalued, perhaps they are actually, they should be 120%. But the point is that we get a third-party, independent, look at the numbers, and a sign-off on the numbers from an independent third party. This is an attempt to legitimize the numbers, because as it stands right now, the metrics that are going to be used are still going to be developed by the EDOs. They're going to be presented by the EDOs as fact. And some people will disagree with that, others may agree. But if we have a third-party, independent, reasonable citizens, reasonable residents that endorse it, or give recommendations on how to improve that, I believe that the issue of accountability and attribution can be greatly improved.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I do, and I recognize you.
Thank you. I agree with the concern that Counsel McLaren has put forward. My concern is, when I look at the recommendations that are before us, I see, under Transparency and Accountability, number two, establish formal transparency and accountability committees. So I see the potential to, there's already a lot of committees that have already been recommended, and I should make this point. One of the major points of feedback I got from my stakeholders, when I was talking to, is the concern that we are bogging down the board of directors with too many committees and too much excess red tape and bureaucracy. I mean, there are points, but we want to make sure that we're dealing with these concerns efficiently, rather than creating a new committee for every situation that comes up. The other concern that I have is, under Performance Measurement, recommendation number six, it says, "Adopt existing tested third-party models of performance measurement wherever possible." So I think that those concerns are already built in with the committees that are already recommended, and with the fact that we're already recommending tested third-party models of performance measurement to deal with exactly the problem that Counsel McLaren has pointed out, plus the fact that if we're going to adopt an SLA, a service-level agreement, that means, as council, we get to pick what those performance measures are going to be, and presumably, we're going to pick ones that are easy, measured, and already measured by third parties. So I guess my major concern is just that we're adding an additional layer of red tape into this that I think is unnecessary and could have operational concerns. So while I appreciate concern, I'm just not sure this is the best way to deal with it, so I'm afraid I'm going to have to vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, and I return the chair.
So anybody else that wishes to speak? Counsel McLaren, you have the floor.
So just very briefly, transparency and accountability are not the same thing as attribution, and that was the difference. Transparency and accountability is what's written in the report. Attribution is something slightly different, and that's the reason for this. That's the it.
Thank you. So we will call the vote, then, on the motion to amend. And that loses by a vote of 2 to 10. Counsel McLaren, you have 1 minute and 50, oh, no, I'm sorry, that was the old clock. You have 4 minutes and 10 seconds on the clock.
I'm sure I won't take that much. And the last one is also under the heading of Transparency and Accountability, that a, I was going to say sixth, but I guess now it's fifth clause, be added that reads, "All EDOs must be willing and able to account for every nickel of public money spent." It was unfortunate, oh, I guess we need a seconder first.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend. It's moved by Counsel McLaren. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counsel O'Sannick. Counsel McLaren, you have the floor.
Thank you. So as you guys may all know, there was some requests for some information that wasn't granted, and there may be legitimate reasons for that. Going forward, that should never happen again, and I believe that this is, in fact, where the world is going. And if we don't recognize this, we will be stuck in this accountability and transparency problem. So just some recent history. If we recall, e-Health was brought down by a particular individual who expensed a bagel for $1.98. E-Health was probably a pretty good idea, but the problems that arose out of that, and the expenses, brought down what was probably a very good thing. If you think of the recent Senate scandal in which croutons of some kind, or R.H. U.S. was widely spent, this is reflective of a society that hasn't yet, or, sorry, government officials, perhaps, that have not yet realized that the public is demanding greater accountability and transparency than regular accounting principles have allowed for in the past, or in recent past. The idea of materiality into the thousands of dollars is part of the reason that we're here. If KEDCO had been transparent and willing and able to account for every nickel, I imagine that we probably wouldn't be here. This is the way of the future. It's what the people expect, I think. And when people, when people in authority or in power don't recognize this, sometimes very good things go bad, like e-Health. Sometimes we get scandals like what happened in the Senate. What was the result of all that? Very little, but people were still angry. And if we are actually prepared to do this, to actually account for every nickel, going forward, we can avoid this accountability, one part of this accountability and transparency issue that has plagued us in the past. I also understand that the city can actually do this quite readily. We have a new system that actually allows every receipt and every invoice to be brought up, like, on a moment's notice. It would strike me that this is the new way of doing things in the 21st century, and that we should adapt to it as soon as possible, and that's what this is for. Every nickel of public money should be spent, because that's the new standard. And if we don't get there, I think we'll be back here with more complaints about misuse of money, or lack of clarity of where it went. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize. Was there, is there a seconder for this motion? Oh, yes, sorry, it was seconded by Counsel O'Sannick. Deputy Mayor Neal.
Yes, just a quick question for our CAO. I'm former treasurer. I know there's a recommendation in here to have a public and more rigorous audit process as part of the recommendation. Does this amendment add any value? Is there any value added from this amendment to the wording or the intent of that, of that recommendation that's already before us?
CAO Hunt.
Difficult question to answer in terms of the specificity of this particular motion. There are reporting standards for organizations, internal control processes, budget versus actual reporting, responsibilities of boards of directors, and finance committees, and other structures that are put in place to review those things on a regular basis. So those typically are the standards of financial oversight and financial performance. To interpret this literally, this would add a substantial amount of bureaucracy to the elements of reporting such details.
And, under Transparency and Accountability, the first bullet, implement a formal transparency plan, policy, that reflects the eight key areas espoused by Transparency International: ethics, public complaints, leadership, performance, human resources, budgeting, procurement, and audit results. And I've had an opportunity to look at the Transparency International criteria. Would that be achieving a higher level of scrutiny that goes beyond just a simple corporate audit?
CAO Hunt.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The specifics of that Transparency International model, I'm not that familiar with. However, it was part of the considerations that we entertained as part of the review committee process and the recommendations. And the committee felt that those elements were part of the new age, and part of things that should be introduced as a best practice on a go-forward basis. I do come back to my previous comments about the fact that there are internal control processes, policy formulation, and reporting standards with review and reporting requirements that can be introduced by corporations in order to improve the accountability and transparency of financial information.
Thank you.
So anybody else that wishes to speak? Counsel Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just through you, in general, I'm for transparency and accountability. I have a hard time asking an organization that we fund to hold them to a standard that we have, we would have difficulty doing ourselves, in the way that maybe you could interpret this, and it's a fairly blunt way. However, it's coming. I think you're right. But I think that organizations need to see that that risk exists, and get ahead of it on their own terms and in their own way. There are organizations that have their books on Google Spreadsheets that anybody can see, and they're updated as their accountant updates their Google Spreadsheets. They're much smaller organizations than the city of Kingston, or even KEDCO, but they have their cash flow, but they don't do it to the nickel. And that's the challenge. I understand the concerns of where dollars go, and, you know, I'm glad that the current KEDCO responded to ensure that the finance committee gets to see every penny on the board, and gets to see the broken-down credit card statements in such a way that we know where the nickels are going, in a sense. That's board governance structure, as the CAO was saying, and that's why we, the board insists that at least one counselor sit on that committee. Now, I know that that is a relatively new development, and hopefully, it's something that continues to go forward with these organizations, but I can't support this specific thing, but I can support all of the other pieces of transparency and accountability, and it's simply because we're talking about a nickel, getting it down to a granular place where it's very direct. So I understand the intent. It reflects a very real concern in the community, but I don't think this is the way to ask for it.
Thank you. Counselor Bohm, and then Counselor Camden.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And through you, echoing what Counsel Allen said, I don't think anybody here is going to argue that we want a high level of oversight and transparency. I'm also a little bit concerned about the wording, because it says "all EDOs," and I don't know if it's the mandate of this council to direct every economic development organization to go down to the nickel. I'm assuming that's all EDOs that may be representing Kingston in the future. So also, with this level of oversight, I'd be concerned that with all the transparent practices that are going to be put in place, that all we would create here is simply wasted money, simply because with the recommendations from internationally recognized transparency boards that exist within the report itself, we can go down to every nickel, but are we going to be spending hundreds of dollars chasing nickels? And in a recent Senate audit, there was $20 million spent to find $1.5 million in misspent funds, of which about half of those were successfully appealed. And then of the remaining half, another half were deemed to be just errors in expense statements and unclear policies. So I think in the end, after $20 million being spent, about a quarter million was recovered. So you literally spent millions of dollars chasing hundreds of thousands, which was not a good use. It added a certain amount of effort that was just misspent money, and that money, I think, could be spent more on the actual economic development. With the recommendations that already exist within this report, I think transparency will be dealt with quite successfully, based on the internationally accepted practices. So for that reason, I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Camden, and then Counselor O'Sannick.
Thank you, and through you. I agree with Counselor Bohm. I mean, we're coming forward with suggesting a transparency plan or policy using ethics given by Transparency International, and we're creating a committee made up of community members to increase transparency and accountability. And if there is going to be, I believe that it's appropriate at that level for that particular committee to come up with any recommendations there. I don't think it's necessarily appropriate at this point for us to recommend, in my opinion, not the best-worded amendment, for a few different reasons. But I think that we're putting the tools in place in order to execute those things. So the Transparency and Accountability Committee, which will be made up of community members as a group, will make these types of decisions, and that's the appropriate place to do it. I don't think it's the appropriate place, right here, to say, it kind of seems like a bit of an off-the-cuff comment, rather than an amendment. But I think that it's appropriate to do it through the committee, within the EDO, made up of community members.
Thank you. And Counselor O'Sannick, and then Counselor Stroud.
Thank you. My interpretation of this amendment is just that it means every purchase must have a receipt, right? Staff can still have expense accounts, they can still, you know, be reimbursed for their expense accounts. Everything should have a receipt right now, I would think, because it's public money. Just like in the city, everything should have a receipt. So my interpretation is just means everything, every purchase, have a receipt. And if it's on the credit card, right, then you just reconcile the credit card every month, and you put it in the drawer for seven months if it gets audited. I don't understand what the concern is with this. Every purchase should have a receipt. Thank you.
And I return the chair, and Counselor Stroud is next.
Yes, Counsel Stroud.
And I agree with Counselor O'Sannick, and I don't disagree with any of the other speakers, actually. other speakers, actually. You all have valid points, but at the end of the day, you've got to choose yes or no. I'm, I'm going to vote in favor, and I'll tell you why. Because during, and we were all in this boat together, in 2014, when we had to submit our campaign finances, and I'm sure with our little district campaigns, you don't, you know, we can't really afford to hire an accountant or anything. So I did exactly that. I had a shoebox that I, I just made sure I always put the receipts somewhere, and I, and I got the receipt every time, and I put it in the shoebox. And then my sister, God bless her, helped me sort it all out at the end. And I had to count for every $6,723.22, or whatever it was. It was something ridiculous, and we couldn't find 25 cents. And it took us forever, and it was an error in addition. I went through that, and that's because that's the Municipal Elections Act law. And I don't see why we wouldn't hold our EDO to, to that standard. Whether it's feasible to, to do so or not, it doesn't really matter because it, it may not ever be enforced. So I'm going, definitely going to support this.
Thank you. Counselor Turner?
Thank you. And through you, Mayor, I think that we need to move forward with these recommendations. And I think it says here, we're going to implement formal plan that affects the key areas. I think this is grandstanding, and I think we just need to get moving forward. We've got a lot of other issues here tonight. Let's get through them. I understand what you're trying to say. It's important. Yes, we do need to be transparent, and we do need to take care of nickel and dimes, and we do need receipts. This is, this is nitpicking, so let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shell?
Thank you. I wasn't actually going to speak, but it, now I am. Yes, it's way too specific. We are creating a bylaw, in effect, when we pass this. And if we have this in it, all, all EDOs willing and able to account for every nickel of public money spent, we're making a huge ask, that we certainly don't ask of other organizations that are publicly audited. We've got a massive amount of protection here, and I think that is way too specific and could actually cause us some problems going down the road because this will become part of our law. And it's, it's a very vague statement, but it's unbelievably specific at the same time. Thank you. So I will be not, not be voting for it.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I do, and I recognize you.
I, I just wanted to say that I completely agree with what Counselor Shell said. This would not add a little bit of red tape. This would be an avalanche of red tape that would bury these organizations. This is not asked of any other public sector organization I've ever heard of. This is not asking for receipts. This is asking for a standard of accounting that's way, way, way beyond anything that we ever see. So I think we just need to rein things in, understand that, yes, transparency and accountability have been concerns, but we have these mechanisms now in place and these recommendations to deal with it. So I completely agree and would encourage council to vote against the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, and I return the chair.
Thank you. Counselor McLaren, you have the last word.
Thank you. May I ask, staff, can you, if council were to ask for a particular receipt, could you find it?
CAO Hunt?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes.
And how much effort would that take?
Depending on the level of specificity, it might take a fair bit of effort, depending on what year it was, where it was located, it could take some time.
So based on the new program, the new system that we have now for accounting, if I had wanted to know a receipt, say, last week?
CAO Hunt?
The system we have is a system we've had for the last 18 years. You know, that, so to get to the issue, we, we would not pay an invoice without a receipt. That's, that's what I refer to as internal controls. Those are systems and policies that are introduced for effective financial management and accounting standards, accounting practices. Those are the things that are audited on annual basis by the auditors in terms of the assessment of the internal control aspects of the organization in order to demonstrate the, the fairness and accuracy of the financial reporting that does come to council and either through budgets or quarterly here at this, at this table.
And may I ask, what is the materiality of the corporation?
Putting me on the spot on that one, I think it's probably, probably a million and a half dollars or something of that sort.
And so part of the issue that's at stake here is, we have receipts for things, I imagine, to the penny, and we can get them if we need to. But it's not, it's not easily found if we want to actually find them within the materiality. So if there is a $20 orange juice, that's what we're, that's what the public is expecting now in the world today, is perfect transparency and accountability of public funds. Nobody wants to see a $20 glass of orange juice. And our materiality does, will never catch that in a million and a half dollars. It's, it's well beyond that. And I'm sure there's lots of safeguards and stuff like that, but that's not what the, what's at issue with the public. The legality is not. So, and this can be seen in the case of the Senate scandal. The people demanded more transparency and accountability, and they needed to get it. That's why we paid $20 million. If they had been accountable from the beginning, we wouldn't have had to pay that, or the government wouldn't have had to pay that. By establishing this principle here, we are going beyond and exceeding best practices so that the problem, or at least one of the problems that brought, brought us here, will be eliminated. If every nickel is accounted for, which it should be, especially in the case of our elections here, what happened to the money will never be a problem again because we can get that information. And that is one of the purposes of that review committee, was to find ways to avoid having that problem again. And I want to point out to those who said that this is going to really cause a lot of red tape, must be willing and able. Doesn't mean that they will do it. It's if requested. Sure, we can ask for a particular receipt. How often do we? There hasn't been an occasion yet. But if there ever becomes an occasion, the fact that we can do it is great because the city does actually account for every nickel, because every invoice is on record. And every invoice is to the nickel nowadays. I mean, in the past, they may have been to the penny, but we got rid of the penny. What I'm asking here, some might call grandstanding, but it's also what I've heard at the doors, and it's called representing what I believe is in the interests of the public. We do have a higher standard in the 21st century than we did in the 19th and 18th century with regards to accounting. Materiality may be way too high. And that's what I've been hearing. And the result is this particular amendment. I hope you will consider supporting it.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on the amendment. Please vote. And that loses by a vote of four to eight. Counselor McLaren, you still have the floor for another three minutes and 20 seconds.
I'm done for this round. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I do, and I recognize you.
Thank you. I just want to revisit one of my earlier comments about what I believe is the need for greater control and greater alignment with a separate tourism organization and with a separate economic development organization as well. So we've established strategic priorities as council. So we want to create a smart economy. We want to foster innovation and entrepreneurship. We've heard from entrepreneurs tonight about the importance of that and how we felt, if anything, that there's been a lack of focus there. And so as a city, we're trying to, to answer that call. We need to make sure that our agencies are moving as quickly and effectively as possible. So in line of greater control and greater alignment, there is one, perhaps, last amendment that I'd like to, to put forward, Mr. Clerk, if that's available. So this is a, a motion to amend moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Bohm, that governance structure and operations recommendation number four be amended as follows. So it's a establish independent board of directors for a standalone tourism and a standalone economic development organization. It being understood that the directorship or membership for the tourism organization will include the commissioner of community services, and the economic development organization will include the chief administrative officer. So I just want to explain exactly why I'm putting forward this amendment. It's not because I think that our CAO and our deputy CAO need more work. Rather, it's to encourage more alignment. So right now, our commissioner of community services is now oversees the culture department, oversees special events and recreation. There's clearly alignment with tourism there. So I want to make sure that what we're doing as a city is speaking to and aligning what's going on with our separate tourism organization. Our CAO, as we all know, is very involved in employment lands, and, and that's a key part of attracting new businesses and making sure that that space is available. So that's why my thought is, again, to make sure that we have alignment on that side as well. So right now, what we're proposing is to maintain myself and a couple of counselors as political links to each of these boards. I'm asking that council would also consider including a staff or an operational link to ensure that we have that alignment. So that's the reason for this motion to amend, and I ask council to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, and I return the chair.
I, I think you need to keep the chair on this one.
Oh, I will do so. Thank you. It's getting late. Yes, Counselor Hutchinson?
I, I can see the structural reasoning behind this. I am assuming that those two staff members can delegate. I honestly don't think they need to be there personally at any time, but we do that, and they can delegate somebody else to go under certain circumstances if they so see fit. That's understood, is it not? I'm asking the mayor because it's his motion.
I suppose.
Probably we can ask staff, and I think they'll say yes, but I just want to make sure that that's what's happening.
Probably the best, my suggestion would be you maybe ask staff how they would interpret that, and then we can see if we need to adjust the wording.
Okay, I ask that question.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So I didn't actually hear your comment, and that's why I was, I was conferring with the, with the commissioner. So my understanding is your question was whether or not the role could be delegated in, from time to time. And, you know, we have had experience with this sort of thing in the past where, you know, as the CAO, I sit on Utilities Kingston, Kingston Hydro, Kingston Frontac Housing Corporation. And with Kingston Frontac Housing Corporation in particular, I do have some discretion to delegate that responsibility. I do have to inform council of that. And so I'm not sure how this might be constructed in terms of the, of the membership of the board of directors and how that would play out. But, you know, it, the intent is that there's some, as I understand it, there's, there's a link to some senior, senior positions with the city to these boards, particularly in the early going. And so certainly, if there was delegation, or it could be delegated, we would, we would, we would want to have the right representation there in order to make sure that we, we move forward strategically and in an aligned fashion.
Could I ask if it would be a friendly amendment to add the words "or designate" under, after both of those positions?
I think I have the floor. I think I have the floor. No offense. The, and I was just going to say that we could cover this, or their delegates at the end. My concern is simply this. We just narrowed down, we just increased the workload indirectly and narrowed the, the, the organizational structure at, at the top to some extent. And I'm not interested in belaboring our senior staff any more than we already do. And, and I, I think, in my experience, that can be done by delegate. And maybe not in the beginning. They'll have to go, but just make sure things are working out as they should. And then we'll go from there. I have a, so can I ask if that's a friendly amendment of the mayor and Counselor Bohm? Oh, sorry, I'm asking you.
Yes, I think I'm having a deja vu moment. Yes, is that indeed a friendly amendment? I see nods all around. So if we can add that, or designate after each of those positions. Thank you.
And if I may, I've got one more question. It's also of the mayor. He's the one that went and talked to the stakeholders. Does he feel confident that this kind of structural move is acceptable to the main, to the players in what would become something like Tourism Kingston?
So.
Because we are, you know, I'll just explain where I'm coming from. One of the reasons why KEDCO is a, is an arms-length organization is a certain amount of unwillingness or not wanting to have too much government input into economic development issues, and to have it more out in the community, particularly the business community. So I just want to make sure before we pass something that its reception will be positive. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yes, if you wish to answer that.
So to, to answer your question, Counselor Hutchinson, I did not propose this exact amendment to each of the stakeholders. But what I can say is that in my discussions with them, it was very clear that there was some tension, and there were those that wanted both organizations to move closer to City Hall, others that felt that perhaps it should still be arms-length. So this, in my view, is an attempt to respond to those concerns by, if anything, pulling these standalone organizations even closer to City Hall without actually moving them into City Hall. So it is a response to their concerns. At the end of the day, there, I'm sure there will be, I would suggest there would be opportunity for further stakeholder input that could flush out any additional concerns, but that's the best answer I can give you at this point.
Thank you. I'll vote for this.
Counselor Stroud?
Thank you. I'm inclined to support this amendment, although I, I am conscious of the very precious time of our CAO and deputy CAO, but if they're agreeable. I do have actually a, a minor amendment, or what I consider a minor amendment to the amendment, that I've sent the deputy clerk by email. I'll read it now, and she may not have typed it out yet. It's basically to, to compensate the ex, the, the board, each board with the extra member, which would be the CAO and deputy CAO, and at the same time, reduce the number of counselors on each independent board, keeping in mind that we're doubling the number of boards, which would mean four counselors need to be available, to one per board. Basically, to keep, I'll read it out. Add, add a second clause to this amendment that reads, "And to keep the city representation the same, and to not expand the number of directors on the board, the number of counselors on each independent board be reduced to one counselor per board."
I, I'm, I'm trying to get my head around whether that's contrary to the intent of the existing motion. I see one nod and one shaking of the head. If I could ask for a word with the clerk? On the advice of the clerk, I'm going to rule that as contrary to the intent of the motion.
Point of order, isn't it not up to the mover and secondor to decide if it's a friendly amendment?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. I believe it's the Deputy Mayor that makes the ruling on that. He's asked me for advice. I provided it. Ultimately, it's his decision.
And following that advice, I've ruled it out of order. You're welcome to challenge the chair if you so choose. That's the next step in this process. the chair if you so choose. That's the next step in this process.
That's really, really tempting, but I'm not going to be baited into wasting more time, council. It's very late. I think that we're going to need to grapple with the idea that we've just, we're talking about splitting off into two boards, and now we're allocating more very precious resources to both of these boards, and we're basically growing the bureaucracy. And I think we need to be cognizant of that. If we're not going to compensate it in any way, then we're going to be the ones spending those extra hours, you know, in duplication essentially on both boards.
I'm going to suggest that I'm showing a lot of indulgence in allowing you to debate what was just ruled out of order. If you have something else that you wish to bring to the table, you have about probably three and a half minutes left.
No, I'll just, I'll be thinking about the whether I'm supporting for the rest of my time. Thanks.
And Counselor Shell. Sorry, you're in my blind spot. I think I missed you there.
Get your glasses. Oh, they're there. I am happy to support this, particularly, as I mentioned earlier, all the things that the city already has as an involvement in tourism. To have the Commissioner right there, I think, is fabulous. I left out the waterfront and the new kick-and-push trail. I mean, the city is just getting so involved in the whole tourism aspect under its purview. I mean, this is what the city has already in-house, so that it's going to be aligned in supporting, however the organization, Economic Development Organization unfolds, I think is an excellent, excellent move. And of course, to have the CAO in the economic side is also only to benefit the new organizations. So I'm an enthusiastic supporter of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor or opposed.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and I'll just note that that passed by a vote of 11 to 1. So just, without returning the chair, if I can just use my last couple of minutes of speaking time, all I would want to add is I think it's clear that the review committee has recommended a path for us that has brought these arms-length organizations much closer into City Hall, and what we have done tonight through this passed amendment and the amendment of Counselor Allen is to bring it even closer. So it's very clear, in my view, that there should be no doubt that this is not in any way approving status quo. This is going to be a very different world going forward. It's not going to be without its growing pains. There's a lot of work still to be done in terms of implementing some of what this is going to happen, but I do encourage council to vote for this plan. I think it's definitely going to be turning a page. It's time to move forward, and this really is, in my view, a new beginning for both economic development and tourism in a very positive way. So I hope that council will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, and I return the chair, and I just have a brief final announcement, if nobody else.
So, I have the chair. I'm not sure that procedurally there's space for announcements.
I wish to speak to the motion as my final opportunity to speak to the motion.
So I will accept a third round of speakers' list. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak that has not spoken a second time? Counselor Stroud.
I think it's only fair if we're going to a third round. I think I'm going to go back to, we're getting near the end of the night. I think that, in my opinion, by approving this review process as valid as possibly the majority of it is, it is losing sight of the overall pressing question which we were asked to do by our citizens, and that is to hold KECO to account, to make them more effective and more transparent. It's possible that this process may achieve this, but there certainly was enough uncovered by the review and the soul-searching in the community over the last few months to justify more radical action, and I still think that that would be the correct, most honest and most ethical way to deal with this. And like I've said before, I would have supported having KECO enter into a competition to stay on as the EDO, and I would have liked to see that process. And so, having been told procedurally, I'll have to vote these recommendations down to get to that, as Counselor George had suggested already. That is what I plan to do, and I'm very happy to do that, and I know I'll sleep well tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So, moving on to the second round, Counselor Turner.
Thank you, and I think I'm going to stand up. We've been sitting all night. I'd like to thank everyone for doing so much work on this, and bring it back to that. And I'd like to say, I accept these recommendations. I think it's a place that we start, and we can go forward. And I won't sleep well tonight if you're not going to vote on it. That's going to be very frightening, because then we have to start all over again. That kind of scares me. I think there's a lot of good things in here that we can take and use it as a recommendation and go forward. I think we've worked long and hard. I think the communities worked long and hard, and I hope it's a starting point for us to go forward. And I think it's a great place to start, and there's a lot of work that's been done. And I think that's all I want to say right now, because it's been a long night. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Neal.
I was hoping to speak last, but if somebody else wishes. I saw some other hands there.
My apologies. Counselor Bohm.
That you're worshiping through you, I think already, just with these discussions that we've had, not just here, but everywhere in the community, collaborations started. You've got people from the School of Business connecting, coming in, giving ideas, showing internationally-used platforms. You've got models coming. You've got business owners that are coming and telling us their successes and things they'd like to see. So, the collaborative approach, it's already happened throughout this process, and it's only going to get better. We're only going to learn from this. So, did the review and everything nail everything exactly on the head? No, it never will. This is a holistic approach. This is going to be a living policy. This is going to be ongoing. We don't just set the economic development goals today and then not look at them for five years. This is always going to be ongoing. So with that, and with the recommendations and the amendments and everything, I think we've got a good starting point. And this is really about tomorrow. It's, yes, you can look back and learn lessons from yesterday, but ultimately, at some point, we've got to take the next step into the future. So with that in mind, I'm going to support the recommendations and the amendments that go with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Allen.
Thank you, and as we move forward with implementation, I just want us to be careful. We want to do this in the right way. There are parts, there are successes that are still taking place in parts of KECO. I was at a starter and summer company event recently, met a large cohort of young entrepreneurs who can access provincial money with the support of KECO. So, there are people being helped in our community currently, and we need to keep that in mind going forward, that the work is still being done by the existing organization. And we're looking to amplify, increase, shine more light on that as a council, bring it closer, be more collaborative with that. And I think all of those things are good, and I think probably KECO's Board of Directors and anyone involved in economic development in our city will celebrate that. I just want council to know that, and to remember that there is good work being done. And certainly, some of the stuff I've been undertaking with rural economic development, I couldn't do without the support of KECO. And so, there is work that has been done, that is being done, that will continue to be done while we flesh out this process. And while it may not have come to light in the community the way we want, we need to recognize that that work is still there. There are people who are working despite all this controversy to try and improve the community. And so, we need to make sure that we are all on the same page in that we want to elevate economic development going forward, and that we don't want to forget the successful efforts that do exist and have taken place going forward. So, just wanted to mention that. However, all of our amendments tonight and these recommendations, I'm very excited to move forward. And, I mean, we have the Board of Directors, before we amended all this, they signed on for this, so hopefully, we'll have support in implementing these changes from the whole community, including the volunteers who make up the Board of Directors at KECO.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak before I give Counselor Neal the last word? Deputy Mayor Neal, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and I'll make this very brief. I think the most critical of all of these bullets is the one under Transparency and Accountability, Bullet 4, that says, "Craft and implement a formal service-level agreement between the City of Kingston and both standalone economic development and tourism organizations, and adopt a more rigorous annual assessment of operations." That's council's marching orders. That's us saying that we will do the due diligence that's required to ensure that this isn't going to turn out to be some kind of status quo, moving along for KECO. And I believe that that may be the last time I say the word "KECO." I believe that we need to talk about economic development organization moving forward that fulfills the principles that are before us. And I'm looking forward to us moving on to that glorious day when this is, when we have a more accountable regime. Thank you.
Thank you. So, just so everyone understands what will happen procedurally, we will call the vote on the recommendations. If it passes, then we will move right to motion number three. We will pass that, at which time I will read out all the recommendations formally, then as, we will then be meeting as council. Right now, we're still as Committee of the Whole. If the recommendations do not pass, then there's an opportunity for another motion to come forward. Okay, so, point of order, Counselor McLaren?
Where can I separate them? There's a few that I'd like to...
So, I will take separations now. Counselor McLaren.
Thank you. May I separate under Economic Development Objectives and Directions, point number two and point number three. And under Governance, Structure and Operations, point number three, please.
Are there any other separations? Okay, so what we will do then is we will, I will work through this in order. I'm going to do this. Mr. Clerk, can I see you for a moment? Okay, so what we're going to do, we're going to take the vote on the separated clauses first. Now, if one of them doesn't pass, then you're going to have to give me some time to understand if that's going to impact some of the other recommendations, but we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. So first, I will call the vote on recommendation number two, under Economic Development Objectives and Directions, "Map the economic development ecosystem and prioritize its activities where it can bring the greatest value." We'll call the vote.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We're just going to pop up something that says "motion as amended," but we'll be voting on specifically that particular section in the recommendation for the ease of time and reference.
So just so, is everyone clear what clause we're voting on? So we will call the vote. Please vote. And that carries by a vote of 11 to 1. Now we will call the vote on recommendation number three, under the same section, "Focus economic development activities in six key areas," and those areas are listed. Please vote. And that carries by vote of 9 to 3. Next, we will call the vote on recommendation number three, under Governance, Structure and Operations, "Maintain the small-business enterprise center function within a new standalone economic development organization." Please vote. And that carries by a vote of 11 to 1. Now we will call the vote on all of the remaining recommendations and all the remaining action clauses. So essentially, everything left else from that motion. Please vote. And that carries by a vote of 10 to 2. New motion number three, that council rise from the Committee of the Whole and the Chair report. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by Deputy Mayor Neal, seconded by Counselor George. And that carries. So now I'm going to report as council with the motion that we've just passed. Mr. Clerk, can I see you for a moment? Okay, so I will try to get through this as quickly as I can. Moved by Deputy Mayor Neal, seconded by Mayor Patterson, that the following recommendations, as referenced in the KECO Review Committee 2016 Summary Report and Assessment, as amended, be approved. Economic Development Objectives and Directions, commit to a holistic and diverse set of economic development objectives that underpin Kingston's Economic Development Organization. Number two, map the economic development ecosystem and prioritize its activities where it can bring the greatest value. Number three, focus economic development activities in six key areas, investment attraction and investment aftercare, business retention and expansion, and work with local businesses, support for small business and entrepreneurs, support for workforce development, high-quality jobs and skills building, support for knowledge industries, young workers, technology transfer from post-secondary institutions, and incubation innovation enablement, and development, management, and marketing of the tourism sector. And, under Governance, Structure and Operations, number one, maintain economic development programs and services within an arms-length organization in Kingston with improved and formalized systems of oversight by the City of Kingston. Number two, separate Tourism Kingston Destination Marketing Organization into a standalone arms-length organization with its own Board of Directors, staff, and mandate. Number three, maintain the small-business enterprise center function within a new standalone economic development organization. Number four, establish independent boards of directors for standalone tourism and a standalone economic development organization, it being understood that the directorship or membership for the tourism organization... or membership for the tourism organization will include the Commissioner of Community Services or their designate, and the economic development organization will include the Chief Administrative Officer or their designate. Number five: Ensure respective Boards of Directors continue to maintain seats for the Mayor and City Council. Number six: Establish a transition committee to be responsible for oversight and direction over the restructuring process. Number seven: Enhance the quality of public involvement through the development of advisory committees that address transparency, strategic planning, or special projects, and welcoming members of the public to occupy seats in such committees. Number eight: Create sector and industry-specific advisory committees. Number nine: Establish formal oversight structures within the City of Kingston related to funding of economic development and tourism operations. Number ten: Recruit new leadership and undertake internal staffing review. Number eleven: The Board of Directors give consideration for both organizations to amend their corporate structure to place City Council as the membership of each organization. And, Transparency and Accountability. Number one: Implement a formal transparency plan/policy that reflects the eight key areas espoused by Transparency International: Ethics, Public Complaints, Leadership, Performance, Human Resources, Budgeting, Procurement, and Audit Results. Number two: Establish formal transparency and accountability committees for each Board. Number three: Explore real estate options and most suitable locations for both tourism and economic development standalone operations. Number four: Craft and implement a formal service-level agreement between the City of Kingston and both standalone economic development and tourism organizations, and adopt a more rigorous annual assessment of operations. And, Performance Measurement. Number one: Adopt performance measurement systems that measure internal and external metrics and implement a continuous improvement performance measurement system. Number two: Reflect and exceed wherever possible current best practices for external measures and ensure measures are outcomes-based. Number three: Develop measurement systems that account for attribution, i.e. extent or level of involvement, and utility, i.e. worthiness of investment. Number four: Ensure performance measures are transparent in publicizing indicators, sources, and methodologies. Number five: Separate measures needed to be developed for the six key areas of economic development. Number six: Adopt existing tested third-party models of performance measurement wherever possible, and ensure contractual obligations based on reporting on specific measures are maintained. And, Financial Operations. Number one: Make annual financial reports publicly accessible. Number two: Ensure program leads and finance committee members of Boards receive skills development training in financial management. Number three: Tie budget line items associated with specific projects directly to performance measures for those projects. And, Communications and Public Engagement. Number one: Transition from one-way to two-way approaches to communications for the economic development and tourism organizations. Number two: Diversify communication tools adopted and employed by the Economic Development Organization and Tourism Kingston. Number three: Explore means of incorporated technology platforms that will permit and encourage two-way communications and 360-degree feedback. And number four: Undertake a rebranding exercise for the standalone economic development organization, but maintain Tourism Kingston branding, which was redeveloped recently by Kingston Accommodation Partners and adopted by Tourism Kingston. And, that the mandate of the separate Tourism Kingston organization include the implementation of an integrated tourism strategy as described in City Council's 2015 to 2018 Strategic Plan, and that staff in cooperation with KECO be directed to implement the aforementioned recommendations. So, Mr. Clerk, can I see you for one? So now we will call the vote as counsel. Please vote. And that carries by a vote of 10 to 2. Is there any other business? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, I'll ask for bylaws.
Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Hutchinson, that bylaw one be given its first and second reading.
Please vote. And that carries by a vote of 11 to 1.
Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Hutchinson, that bylaw one be given its third reading.
Please vote. And that carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Camden. Please vote. And that carries. Thank you very much.